Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sirsi.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher. Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Let's get it on.
Good evening, everyone. We are super excited to have the meeting tonight. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first is in honor of Women's History Month, and the second is in honor of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Tonight's agenda will include three voting items: Resolution calling for hostage release, bilateral ceasefire, and humanitarian aid in Gaza, but I think the name has been switched around; second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers, as well as the second reading ordinance approving a contract with Mallorca Services LLC for the stabilization of the vacant Washington McLachlan School Site at 6501 Popular Ave. We have a presentation tonight, Police Department Annual Report, followed by a work session on the council budget, update from the council budget working group. In terms of upcoming agendas...
Are we at the point where we're talking about the record and changes to the record? In addition, I'd like to formally enter the reauthorization of the Crossroads Development Authority so that we can begin the process. There's been several emails back and forth, or lack of emails forth, from the organization to make sure that the authorization goes through and to look at some of the bylaws in order to make sure that they can potentially buy property and some other things that will make it really dynamic. So I'd like to make sure that's on the record so that we can enter it into the process.
On the record in terms of upcoming agenda, or just on the record to make staff aware that that is something that we would like to have worked into an upcoming agenda?
To make staff aware. I thought that's where we were.
Okay.
Because that's all.
Okay, yep, sure. So just wanted to make sure that our clerk makes that topic to our list of upcoming topics for consideration to be added to the agenda. In terms of the next couple of meetings, to provide our staff with much-needed time to get our budget ready, because once we come back from the next couple of weeks of not having council meetings, we will be in the full throes of the budget. So we will not have a meeting on Wednesday, March 20th, and we will also not have a meeting on Wednesday, March 27. On Sunday, March 31st is Easter Sunday, and then, as I mentioned, when we come back, we will be in full-budget mode. So on Wednesday, April 3rd, the council meeting will be at 7:30. It will begin with the city manager presentation and overview of the FY25 recommended budget, as well as the administration, ARPA segments of the budget. And then on Wednesday, April 10th, the council will meet at its regularly scheduled time. We will have a public hearing on the FY2025 recommended budget, as well as a budget presentation on Public Works Housing and Community Development. Okay, and so with that, I am going to read our proclamations for this evening. The first proclamation is the Women's History Month proclamation. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our communities in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas, in shattering glass ceilings, overcoming discrimination, harassment, hardship, women have been bold and fearless, widening the circle of opportunities for women and girls, and creating stronger, healthier communities. And whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social values in every sphere of the life of our communities. And whereas, women have served as leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and civil rights movement, and other movements, which create more fair and just society for all. And whereas, women have served our country courageously in the military, and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions. And whereas, far too often, women's heroic efforts and their stories have gone untold, especially those of the millions of Black women, immigrant women, Indigenous women, and others from diverse communities. And whereas, this year's theme, women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion, recognizes women past and present who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination in all forms from society and commit to embracing everyone and excluding no one in the common pursuit of opportunity, equality, and justice. Now therefore I, Talisha Sirsi, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month in the City of Tacoma Park, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance celebrating the contributions and women that women have given to society throughout history. Okay, thank you very much. Apparently, I do need those readers. All right. I'm fighting bifocals right now. All right. Did you just say good luck?
No, I can't hide it. Don't even try.
Thank you. All right. Mayoral proclamation, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is recognized each March to promote respect for people with developmental disabilities and bring awareness of the barriers that people with developmental disabilities can face. And whereas, developmental disabilities are a group of conditions relating to physical, learning, language, or behavior that last throughout a person's lifetime, such as ADHD, autism, cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, intellectual disability, learning disability, and other disabilities. And whereas, the CDC estimates that about 1 in 6 children aged 13, I'm sorry, 3 to 17, has one or more development disabilities, and the exact number of people of all ages in the U.S. affected by intellectual and development disabilities is not known. And whereas, stereotyping discrimination and bullying towards individuals with developmental disabilities is a nationwide problem. And whereas, children and adults with developmental disabilities strive to be self-sufficient, learn alongside their peers, work to earn a living, and contribute to their community. And whereas, people with developmental disabilities should be treated with dignity and respect, and should have the resources needed to live secure, fulfilling lives, and access their communities and services needed. And whereas, awareness of barriers people with developmental disabilities can face in participating in the community, and collaboration on how to overcome those barriers, can bring about broader inclusion and better outcomes for everyone. And whereas, the City of Tacoma Park aims to be an inclusive and equitable community where everyone is appreciated for their unique abilities. And whereas, the City of Tacoma Park is a welcoming city that is dedicated to fostering acceptance and welcome of all residents and preventing discrimination and bullying. And whereas, the City of Tacoma Park is stronger and more vibrant because of residents with developmental disabilities. Now therefore I, Talisha Sirsi, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, proclaim March 2024 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
Here again, Mayor Porter would honor this one. As a person who was, or who has a malady, I just wanted to severely and profoundly echo these sentiments, and then also particularly send them out to Mrs. Machui, because we have done a lot of yeoman's work in the efforts of trying to make sure that there is something viable and available for developmentally-delayed, rather than disabled people.
Great, thank you. Okay, and so we're going to move into our legislative update, and we have Ann Seacott here, who is our lobbyist in Annapolis. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We are down to the last few weeks of session, and the next time I report, we'll have, I guess, only a week left in session, with the next couple of council meetings not happening. So here we are in what we call the countdown to crossover. A crossover is the date by which House bills need to be in the Senate, and Senate bills need to be in the House, so that they do not encounter additional hurdles toward passage. That happens on Monday, at the end of the day on Monday. So there is furious voting going on, and there's actually a committee right now that is still voting this evening. So there's just a lot of movement on a lot of bills. And we have some good news on that front. What we have to change our lingo, what we've called for many years now "just cause eviction legislation" has been renamed "good cause", and passed second reader on the House floor today, earlier today. So we are expecting that to pass the House, and, you know, we may be needing to make sure we put a little elbow grease into getting it through the Senate. But this is as far as that issue has gotten in the many years that it's been put forth. This bill that started as, many years ago, as a Tacoma Park City piece of legislation. So now we're looking at statewide. So this is very good news, and we're going to continue to push. And that's, of course, championed by Delegate Janelle Wilkins. Just today, the Melanie Nicole Diaz Fire Safety Bill passed Subcommittee, so that bill is moving. We've already had some movement on a bill on the renters' tax credit to try to expand how many renters are able to take advantage of that on the environmental front. One of the big bills that's moving is the Warmth Act, which is the bill about public utilities. And I've also seen some movement on the bill on noise abatement, although I think it's been amended in a way that isn't necessarily bad, but gives authority, it looks like, just to counties, not to municipalities. So we need to take a closer look at that. And then the one bit of concerning news has to do with the budget. So as we've said all along, the budget would be dominating discussions, and we've gotten to a point in the legislative session where the Senate is poised to pass their version of the budget that includes no revenue enhancements, no tax increases, no tax reform efforts. And the House has made it very clear, they will be moving some tax bills. We've yet to see what exactly they're going to pass. As I said, there's been a lot of voting going on, and so I'll go back and look and see if the House Ways and Means Committee did any voting on tax bills tonight. So it's going to get contentious, to be honest, because the Senate and the governor are not moved right now to increase any taxes. And we'll see what the House comes up with. And in the meantime, there is a bill that accompanies the budget. It is called the Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act. And in that, policy changes are made to impact the budget. And one of the things that is changing, that this bill proposes to change, is not the next year fiscal '25, but beyond fiscal '25, the highway user revenue shares that go to counties and municipalities. And it's a reduction.
Oh, no.
And, you know, folks remember, before session, right before the start of session, you know, the announcement that the Transportation Trust Fund was $3 billion in the hole. And so there are a number of things that are in the works to try to address that, and this is one of them. So in the short run, it won't have an impact, but in the not-too-distant long run, it could. And so I've been communicating with city staff to pull together some information to give to legislators, to see what we can do to perhaps mitigate that. I know that the folks at the Maryland Municipal League are also very much focused on this right now. So there's good stuff and not-so-good stuff happening.
Great. Thank you so much, Ann, and thank you so much for capturing the issue with the highway user revenue. I was surprised that folks weren't saying more about this, and I know I pinged you about it, because I'm meeting with folks and I'm not hearing folks as up in arms as we were the first time, when we were really fighting to make sure that we were getting our fair share of the highway user revenues. So MML is now involved. There is a MML meeting, I believe, on Thursday.
MML, Moco?
Moco.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yep, I'll be there.
Club be going up? The club will be going up on a Tuesday, technically, because people will be met.
So I think that I've already pinged the president of the Montgomery County Chapter of MML to see if they were aware of this change, and to figure out whether or not there are things that we maybe need to do in terms of outreach down in Annapolis to try to get this adjusted. Councilmember Dibala, I see your light first.
Just very quickly, I happened to see the president of the county MML this afternoon, and we talked about this issue also. So, yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, I always really appreciate when an issue that is burgeoning, particularly about budgetary issue, you almost always know that it is happening before people start to be mad about it, because you're good on the numbers. Just wanted to say that. Number two, Ann, I wanted to ask you specifically about the thing that I continue to ask you about, and it's not because you're not, like, following it or anything like that. It's more because of the reality of trying to change the distinctions or narratives about the conduct of young people, so that young people who are not doing anything are not seeing the same as the way that people, young people who are doing things. And the rule-based systems that are aligned with that are important, particularly when there's a lot of other things going on. So I'm curious about whether or not there has been any real, and for that matter, there are a couple of officers in there, if there's been any real push towards some of the things that our police department has articulated as being really important about some changes in the dynamic or paradigm about how they are able to interact with young people?
So there is legislation, both the House and the Senate have passed different versions of a juvenile justice reform bill to make some changes. And you're raising a good question. I will reach out and see if, you know, there are pieces in one or both that address the concerns that the city police has. We'll find out and see if we can push for those particular things.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ann. We really appreciate you, and we will be in touch, because I know that there's a lot of things that are moving soon, especially as things get ready to make their way to next phases. And so even though we are not having this meeting, we will definitely be in touch as you are sending in all of the different materials that we receive regarding Annapolis. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on to public comments on voting items tonight. As was mentioned, voting items include resolution calling for, I need to get this title right, calling for bilateral ceasefire, hostage release, and humanitarian aid in Gaza, second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers, as well as a single reading ordinance approving a contract with Mallorca Services LLC for the stabilization of the vacant Washington McLachlan School Site at 6501 Popular Ave. And again, I just want to remind everyone to please be respectful of one another. You will have three minutes. When you come up, please just give us your name and where you live, and if you have any comments on voting items, then please come on down.
You can be first, Linda.
I thought there was going to be a long queue. Okay. So this is a really hard one, because obviously, there's so many things about this resolution that ought to be there, and so many things that shouldn't be, and I'm not going to try to address them, because I don't have any faith in them being changed. You know, we've been told that it's brave to talk about this, brave to offer a resolution. I just can't see how it's courageous to call out a genocide. I mean, it's so empirical, what's happening there. I realize you're not going to put that word in the resolution, so I'm going to try and temper my remarks to what I think may get by, although I know you've had another go-round with this. The first is the word "permanent." You know, if we're going to call for a ceasefire, and without the word "permanent," we know exactly what's going to happen, because the Netanyahu government has told us. They're going to go in there and finish the job, okay? So if it's not permanent, all we're doing is bringing aid into starving people in a famine, feeding them, and then slaughtering them later. And that really doesn't work. So please, please, put the word "permanent" in there, otherwise this has really no teeth. And the other thing that's missing is a "whereas," which is about the funding of this. And the power that we have as a local community is to pressure the national government to act differently. And the only way we can do that is to put this "whereas" in, which says, "whereas the..." And I've tempered this as well. I mean, I'd rather have it much stronger. So, you know, this is a kind of neutral vanilla version of it, but still, I hope you'll adopt it. "Whereas, the community of the City of Tacoma Park would like to see our tax dollars redirected away from funding and arms that will further kill innocent Palestinians and Israelis, and perpetuate the deadly conflict in Gaza." You know, that really, if you, it's no good just saying, you know, "we want a ceasefire," and then we go home and feel good about ourselves. We've got to do something about it, and that means putting something in there that'll actually try to make this happen. And, you know, lastly, I guess, calling this an Israel-Hamas war is just, you know, factually incorrect. I mean, that's not what's happening. You know, this is not a war between two countries. This is an assault. This is an assault by Israeli government on Palestinians in Gaza, and we should call it out for what it is, but I know you won't do that in this. But I hope that you'll put those other two changes in. Thanks.
Do you have any other comments on voting items?
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Susan Baker. I live on Birch Avenue. I'm in Ward 1. In the 2017-2018 In the 2017-2018 school year, we hosted an AFS exchange student from Gaza in our home. She went to Montgomery Blair, where she tutored in Arabic, where she took ASL class, where she went every week to the Jewish Culture Club because they had really good pizza. She was here on a scholarship called the YES Program, which was set up after September 11th to bring students from mostly Muslim countries to the United States on the idea that people-to-people exchange and people-to-people engagement is how we make peace. It's how we support peace. This community has supported her. She went back to Gaza. She did her, finished her high school, talked about AFS exchange programs, especially with the deaf community in Gaza. They have no opportunity to go anywhere to try and bring more people here so that they could have a similar experience to her. She's back here for college. All of my neighbors supported her program. I am now putting my third kid through college, which I didn't expect to be doing. But my neighbors have stood up and continue to stand up to support her to be here. Her parents and her brother, it was her sister, but she escaped with her aunt who needed chemotherapy and couldn't get it in Gaza. And now her parents and her brother and her whole extended family are in Gaza, and they're running out of food. We have an opportunity here to show her that this community supports the people of Gaza, that we understand that ethnic cleansing is wrong and genocide is wrong, and that the ceasefire needs to be permanent. And I hope that our community will say that and that the words in our proclamation are about the people of Gaza and the pain that they are suffering and have gone through and try to do something to voice our support for them. Our moral support, our community's support is absolutely, absolutely vital. And I want to thank you all for all your support that many of my neighbors and friends have shown for her and her family. And I hope that you all will stand up and do the right thing and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, my name is Lucy Moore. I'm from Ward 3. I did not think we were giving, hey, uh-uh. I did not think we were giving public comment, but Siggy felt very strongly about coming up here. He really appreciates this process, as do I. Did you want to say something?
Please pass the ceasefire resolution.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comments on voting items?
Mayor, I emailed.
Airporting border mayor. There was a request for five minutes by the gentleman.
Okay, thank you. So you've seen me here. My name is Mark Smalley. I'm an immigration attorney. I've been here since '05 in Tacoma Park. And when I saw the original draft the other day, I was telling some folks outside, I couldn't get past the first, I did not think that it would, that the language that I just heard by the spokesman for Netanyahu would be adopted. But I knew, I wasn't shocked because I know exactly what the Jewish Relations Council's in because I've been to events with them. I can go inside with them because my family's involved, so I can go. And I see the, and I know the bullying. And I know, just to stick this in your, with you. I went with my grandmother in 2002 to the debate between Connie Marilla and Chris Van Hollen. And the question came up, it was in a temple in Gaithersburg. And the question came up, Mr. Van Hollen, you are a card-carrying member of the Amnesty International. They just released a report, which, they didn't talk about the report. They said, "which attacks Jews." How can you support it? Everyone's on the edge of their seat. If he had said that he agreed with that report, we wouldn't know who he is today. So he said, "I agree with a lot of what they do, but not that report." I knew he was lying. I knew that he knew what was going on, but that was it. And I think you all are in that position right now because I know everybody on the council and the county is on that position. You're being bullied because, and you know who's being harmed by that? Who's being harmed are the Muslims and the Palestinians. They're being dehumanized in my name, and I don't like it. I don't like it, and that's what hit me. Because my, I was really close to my grandmother growing up. And her two older brothers were killed in the Holocaust. And her, being her, like, favorite person, her favorite, you know, but I spent all the time with her, and she showed me the pictures, talked about it. I, my entire life, my work, my activism, has been a little bit, you know, I opposed the occupation at the beginning, like, when I was in college, because I thought it harmed my family. I thought Israel was really cool, but it was bad to have an occupation. I mean, I still do, but, you know, I think their policies are horrific. But I thought that, how awful it is to be an occupying military. And what do we see today 30 years later? We see Israeli soldiers releasing their own videos, committing atrocities that are insane, blowing up mosques, praying in mosques, forcing, they produce these videos, not, this isn't any undercover person. They produce videos stripping down women, stripping down men, dehumanizing them. And I learned from the Holocaust, never again, that means anybody. But unfortunately, the people on the council and all of them, and the rabbi who came here and said, "I pray for Palestinians," that they get new leadership. What? That's, that's not, that is not Jewish teaching. I will say right now, it's not. And it's not the rabbis I respect. And it's not the lesson that I won from the Holocaust. And I was just sickened that you would say in here, because the biggest killing of Jews since the Holocaust, because whether you say it or not, that equates that with Nazis, which is so ahistorical and crazy. It's also really hurtful. Because it means that, and we know this, any criticism means we're going to be in the ovens again. We're going to be in the ovens. This is the way the Jews talk, in these organized Jewish talk. And, believe me, I am told, you support the Palestinians, you want us in the ovens. My cousin says, so I don't, I don't talk about this stuff. But then we talk about the national sports, other things. But this is what we hear. So putting that language in there is really hurtful to me, really hurtful to those of us who want to say that "never again" means "never again." That means when we do it too. Because it is not a special thing that Germans did, or we talk about Uganda, anybody else who oppresses people. It's not a special thing. I'm really offended by that. And I still think that this reads, and it's not a war of Hamas. We didn't say the United States invaded the Ba'ath Party. We attacked Iraq. We killed Iraqi citizens. Israel is attacking Gaza. The 12,000 kids killed are not Hamas. They are civilians. The doctors captured in the hospital yesterday and held without detention. They are not Hamas. They are not Hamas. And to say that is dehumanizing. And my family in Israel is not Bibi Netanyahu. So if you want to say Likud and all these other parties, say that. But this is an attack on a country. Putin did not attack Zelensky. He attacked Ukraine. Okay? It is dehumanizing to say that these aren't people. They're all Hamas. And there's no reason to put that in there. It doesn't help anybody. It doesn't do anything. But you keep it in there, it dehumanizes people. Get those things out, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Reverend Graylan Hagler. I'm the pastor emeritus of Plymouth Congregational United Church of Christ with many members in Tacoma. I live right across the line in DC. What I want to say is that I would hope that you would be more analytical in the framing of a resolution than what appears on paper right now. The issue is, is to simply call for a ceasefire permanent, ceasefire and humanitarian aid. You have nothing to do with whether it's bilateral or not. Your moral position is to stop the killing, stop the starvation, stop the bombing. That's one thing I want to say to us tonight. And also, it's very interesting that as governments get engaged and make big expenditures, they want to frame the language for us. So all over the media, it became the Israeli Hamas war. You're talking roughly about 1,200 Israelis, 37,000 Palestinians, Gazans. It's the Israeli-Gazan war. That's what that means in terms of civilians being killed, children under the rubble, on top of the rubble, children and women and families being wiped out. So we need to be clear about that. And the thing is, take out the editorial language. Editorial language such as terror. That is biased in so many ways. Your enemies automatically, according to today's narrative, are always terrorists. I want to remind you, the ANC and Nelson Mandela were terrorists when I embraced them. And so we got to be clear that we're not using language that is manipulative and distorted. And let us attempt to be clear and factual and to the point. We need to simply call for a permanent ceasefire. Stop the killing. Stop the maiming. Feed those who are starving. Feed those who need medical care.
Thank you. Any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, my name is Aisha Jacobs. I'm from Ward 5. And when I was 16, I voted for the first time in the Tacoma Park election. I voted for you, and I voted for you. And you failed me. I have always had the word "terror" associated with me, whether it's because I'm Arab or because I'm Muslim. Terror, terrorist. I was in elementary school the first time I had that word thrown at me. I didn't know what it meant. And although you removed the word "terrorist" from the resolution, the implication is still there in the word "terror." It proves that you see us as scary, as unequal. And that's really hurtful. And I didn't plan what to say, so I'm kind of shaking, but... But when you call for peace, using hateful language doesn't get you there. It's only going to cause further violence and further dehumanization. And now it's causing humanization in your own communities because those are the people in your areas that are being targeted by that language as well. And that hurts. Please be more mindful of your language. You said you'd, what, you took six weeks to work on the language in this draft? I think I could have done better in six weeks.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Tom Gagliardo, Hades Lane. I did not intend to speak on this topic tonight. At the end of last summer, I went to Palestine and Israel, and I saw firsthand what the occupation is. Glad to talk to you about it at length at another time. I subscribe now to Harats, the Israeli newspaper. So what I'm going to tell you is what I read in Harats. Harats, excuse me, by Hebrews Rusty. January 28th, there was a conference in Jerusalem of right-wing, ultra-nationalist Israelis. 22 members of the Knesset attended that conference. So did cabinet ministers. If you want to read the article, I'll be glad to share it with you. An Israeli professor from the University of Jerusalem reported that the tenure of the meeting, the resolutions that were passed, called for the removal, remove a person by killing them or shoving them off their land. But that January 28th conference in Jerusalem, attended by 22 members of the Israeli Knesset, called for the removal of Palestinians from Gaza. Every negative has a positive. What has happened in Israel and Palestine since October 7th and certainly for 100 years before that is horrible, negative. But here's what's positive. We've spent the last several weeks educating each other on the reality of Palestine and Israel. Last comment. What the NRA is to the Republican Party, AIPAC is to the Democratic Party. And that's got to stop. We need to speak truth to power. And that's why I've urged you to pass a resolution. Speak truth to power. I don't know what's in the resolution. I don't know where the, you know, what language is being used. But I know that we have to talk about the brutal reality of the occupation of Palestine.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Can those of us on Zoom speak?
Good evening, everyone. I feel like I'm on my ceasefire tour. Keep going from city council to city council, trying to convince people that killing people is not okay. It's amazing. I drive through Tacoma Park. I'm Andy Shalal. I'm the owner of Bus Boys and Poets here. And when I drove through this town, we really thought about moving here for a long time. And one of the things that attracted us is the signage that people had. "War is not the answer." I saw that everywhere. I think it may have even started in Tacoma Park, that sign with the bird. "War is not the answer." I've come to realize that a lot of, I think, what happens here is just window dressing. People in Tacoma likes to pat themselves on the back because they think they are the coolest, the hippest, the most liberal community in the entire United States. But reality speaks otherwise. I remember a few, a couple of years after we opened, we did a survey of our staff about racism. This is way before Black Lives Matter became a cool thing. We did a survey about our staff, about racism. And we found that the highest number of racist incidents between staff and customer happened in Tacoma Park. And I was shocked. I was shocked. I was like, wow, this is really eye-opening. It's because a lot of times what happens here is this quiet racism. And what's happening here with this resolution and the way you all are dealing with this ceasefire resolution is no different. This is not "All Lives Matter." This is what it feels like. This is about a group of people that are being oppressed, systematically ethnically cleansed and wiped off the face of the earth. And that's got to, you have to have language that speaks otherwise. Imagine if you had put out a resolution that says, "Well, we understand black people are oppressed in this country. We understand historically, black people have been oppressed in this country. But you know what? White people are also somewhat oppressed. And let's put "All Lives Matter" as a tagline for our city." Imagine. Would you ever imagine doing that? I'm ashamed. I'm really ashamed. The young lady that spoke earlier today, I can't possibly speak as eloquently as she did. But the fact that she spoke about, she could have done better in the number of weeks in writing this resolution, this resolution looks like it was done by ChatGPT by AIPAC. It really is. It has absolutely no, no soul whatsoever. Nothing. No recognition of the humanity of the people that are being systematically erased. I was here two weeks ago. From that day till now.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
From that day till now, 2,800 people have been killed. And almost 9,000 people have been injured.
Thank you. Your time is up.
But please do better.
Thank you.
Karen Elrich in Ward 5. I think there's a real important lesson here that I've struggled with, with working with many of the councils over the years. You have so many intelligent... You have so many intelligent, thoughtful people living in this city that this resolution should have been done with people like that. You often do things on your own when there's so many of us out here that have so many skill sets. And you would have lost, you would have had this type of response before you put it out there. When, you know, when you get together with the community, you can find out the words to say, the words that mean more to them, how to do things, things that you're not aware of. And I think this is a lesson in that, to kind of see were any of these folks involved in actually looking at the words before you put it out there? And I just see that happen again and again on things. You know, as we have all of these folks that just know about things that you guys can't be expected to know everything. So just thought I had to say that. Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments on voting items?
I want to echo what all of my neighbors here said. My name is Katia Stid. I don't live in the city proper, but I do live in Tacoma Park. And to the woman that just spoke, you all actually did have help from the community and you chose to ignore it completely. Completely. As a mother, as a black woman, I too am ashamed of Tacoma Park. I've lived here since I was 18 years old. I chose to move here because I thought it was a place where I was safe as a black person. A place where, you know, apartheid in any part of the world would be shut down and would be held up as something that we don't believe in. And yet, here we are today after six weeks. It took you six weeks and really kind of kicking and screaming to do this. And again, I just have to lift up the children. You know, we are all, many of us, I assume, are parents here and know children. And we know that no Tacoma Park child would ever endure anywhere near what Gazan children have endured. And if we believe that it's the village that raises children and takes care of children, then you all have to do better. You have to do better. The other thing I'll say is to the whole thing of fear. You know, I'm a, we've heard it here in this room, about being Jewish and having fear if we pass a ceasefire resolution. Do you know I saw four police officers at the Tacoma Park Co-op wrestle a black woman to the ground? I am scared every time I go to the co-op. If I see a police officer sitting there late at night, I don't know what they're going to do. So fear goes both ways. And if we're still concerned, guess what? Whomever is scared here in Tacoma Park, they can go lock their doors. They have a roof. They have medicine. They have food. The people in Gaza have nothing. And they're being forced into the desert. And you might say, what big deal is it that we have a ceasefire resolution in Tacoma Park? There are 102 cities that have passed ceasefire resolutions, right? But you know, there's also something called an uncommitted vote. And if you think this is gonna, what you're doing here is going to get you reelected, think again. That's all I have to say.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Rivera. I live right up Lee Avenue. I grew up here. Went through middle school, high school. Now I graduated from the University of Maryland. Work for Immigrant Advocacy Org, you know. And I just think so many things are ironic about Tacoma Park, you know. It presents itself as such a loving, inclusive, diverse community, right? Like, I came into this meeting and we were talking about how Women's History Month was declared. A month to recognize people who have disabilities is being recognized in Tacoma Park. But what about the women in Gaza? What about the people with disabilities in Palestine? They're not receiving any aid. These women, like, if I start thinking about it so much, like, I will start stuttering. But I just think that it was funny how one of the lines when presenting these great things was that Tacoma Park is a welcoming city that fosters belonging, right? And yet, I was sweating bullets coming down the street wearing my kaffiyeh and I'm not even Arabic. Like, I was, it is just, I don't know, it's just so frustrating, you know? Like, seeing the signs, seeing that you belong, but we pick and choose who that is. And if you do that, then you're just liars. And I just want to leave you with one of my favorite quotes, which is that, "I don't want your help. I want you to realize that your liberation is intimately intertwined with mine." And so all of these movements that Tacoma Park has supported, Black Lives Matter, welcoming immigrants, all of this is directly intertwined with the liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Good evening. My name is Tarif Shreem. Palestinian-American resident of Montgomery County for 35 years now. I have family, I have friends. And I don't even know where to start. I'm just so uplifted by the souls here, souls of courage, conscience, that have spoken much better than I would speak. I don't know where to start. I'm also an Imam, a Muslim chaplain, catering to a large community of students at the University of Maryland, but also to friends and a large community here in Montgomery County. And I don't know what to tell you except that we're heartbroken. We're shocked. We're traumatized. The story then never began on October 7th. We've been dehumanized, colonized, brutalized, persecuted for 75 years. This thing that they've spoken about, this scarf, we were always afraid of wearing it. Our names, our culture, our food, they've attempted to wipe it out completely. Our very existence is a threat. And I really pray that no one, no one, none of you, nobody here has ever, ever experienced the pain of subjugation, humiliation that we experience as Palestinians every day of our existence. I have family right now in Janine, in the West Bank, and you have no idea what decimation, what hell they have unleashed on them. And there's a silent genocide there. Let alone Gaza. Oh, where do we start with Gaza and the genocide of Gaza? And it is a genocide, ladies and gentlemen. It is a genocide. When we speak of 31,000 right now, innocent souls with names, with identities, with families, who have aspirations and dreams, who love to eat and drink and didn't want anything but to live. And they're refugees. 90% of Gazans living in the largest concentration camp in the world have already been besieged. We don't talk about their right to freedom, to being equal to you and me, and about their children. And imagine 12,000, 12,000 children. I was telling the crowd earlier, imagine a number of children enough to fill 200 school buses. Imagine if that's blown up today? Those are the children who have died. We cannot recover them. And there's many dying as we speak right now. What about their lives? Are they equal to the lives of children here, our own children? Do we matter? Or do Palestinians not matter at all and we can just get rid of them? And aid and abet Israel? The reason why this is urgent, and there is a moral imperative here, is because we're funding Israel. We're funding that machine with billions of dollars. Out of Maryland alone, 80 million. Out of America, 18 billion just this year alone to aid and abet crime against humanity and against my people. We've been enduring this for three generations. And I ask, when is the time going to come for us to be humanized? And being seen as equal by people who claim to endorse and champion human rights, international law, and so on and so forth? Oh, my goodness, we're exhausted of this game. And when you just, you know, again, applaud those who are rising and letting their voices roll right now because I see a distinction of a people who are choosing to stand on the side of the oppressor and craft languages also that please the oppressor. But I'm also seeing souls that stand up against oppression. And I tell you, this is a dire moment.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you so much for listening and hearing our voices and stories. Bless everybody here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Ballinger. I'm a 20-year resident of Tacoma Park. I live in Ward Three. I just wanted to say a few things about the resolution. First of all, I'm one of the ones who, with the work of many others, helped bring people here every week for the past several weeks. We followed the lead of Palestinian residents of our city who were coming here by themselves or in small groups and went unheard for quite some time. And then, you know, learned from them as well as other activists about what needed to be said in this moment. And we brought that message to you in every way we could. We brought young and old residents and business owners, white and black, Jews and Muslims. People said bring interfaith leaders. We brought interfaith leaders. People said that they wanted to hear from Jewish residents. We've had so many come out and say their critiques of Israel and why they wanted a ceasefire. And I think we mobilized everyone we could. And actually, there's many more. And I speak as someone who's kind of figuring out how many weeks we're going to come back because the moment is what it is. History is being written and people have to say the right thing about it. And you guys have to figure out if what you're saying is the right thing or not. And people have spoken very powerfully to the many concerns that people have with the resolution as it stands. But the thing that I want to hone in on is that it's not too late to make it much more effective. And it really is by doing, I think, one thing, even though I really do hear what's been said, we need to have it amended to say permanent. Just propose an amendment to take out the qualifiers, bilateral humanitarian. Okay, of course, it's about being humanitarian. And make it stay permanent. Because what we understand, what we know of history and what we know of Israel, you know, the government with all the weapons that's been killing the children, that all they need is one excuse to say that they, the Palestinians, you know, a kid with a rock maybe broke the ceasefire. And they will use that excuse to, you know, to violate it. And then you will be left with nothing, having stood for nothing. There's a zillion scenarios that can show, to illustrate to you why anything less than a permanent ceasefire is just not effective in this moment. And that's really what, I feel accountable to all the people who've come before you and who are in this community, who that's what they want. So again, it's a simple change. Just take out bilateral. Make it permanent. That's the only way to get aid in. It's the only way to bring peace. It's the only way to even begin to talk about how communities can be rebuilt. We cannot do anything that suggests Israel has a right to go back with any more bombs, any more guns, any more snipers and destroy any more of Gaza than they already have. So please, consider one simple amendment, permanent ceasefire.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Hello, my name is Sam. I will read what I got here. So as someone who works in environmental services, I think a lot not only about all the Palestinian martyrs in Gaza and the West Bank and UN workers that Israel's killed in the past five-plus months, but also I think about how Israel's countless war crimes against Palestinians have had a tragic impact on the natural environment. Even then, not just the environment of Palestine, though that is important, but all environments throughout planet Earth, including Tacoma Park. A study written about in The Guardian estimated that approximately 281,000 metric tons of greenhouse gases had been emitted by Israel with, of course, as we know, full support from the United States in the first two months following October 7th, with the vast, vast majority of it coming from Israel and by extension, our country. And that was the first two months. Now that we're at five months, probably closer to half a million metric tons of greenhouse gases, which translates to approximately a billion pounds. On top of that, 2023 was the hottest year on record in modern climate records. 2024 is expected to be even hotter. And we had a day in January, the 26th, that was the hottest January on record in Washington, DC. And continuing this relentless military activity will only further worsen an already dire climate crisis for every inch of this planet, including, of course, right here in Tacoma Park. So this is one of countless reasons, in addition to many others that you've heard, why it's so important for us to push for a resolution, for Israel to permanently stop bombing and attacking Palestine, and also to not include any dehumanization of Palestinians, Arabs, or Muslims. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
My name is Gemana Musa. I'm a 22-year resident of Ward Six. I'm a Palestinian. And this week, when I saw your first draft resolution, I learned what the Tacoma Park Council thinks about Palestinians in Tacoma Park, which was not very much. You wrote a resolution that dehumanized us, that let us be passively killed, that says that Palestinians just can't seem to access food and medicine when we know that we are being bombed. 70,000 tons of bombs shipped from the US to Israel, dropped on Gaza, right? We know they are blocking aid from entering. We know that Israeli citizens have literally set up in front of one of the checkpoints to prohibit trucks from going in, had bounce houses, picnics, cotton candy. I'm not making this up. But somehow Palestinians just can't seem to access aid. Putting it on us? I don't even know what to say with that. So I brought this book. My parents' cousins helped research it. All That Remains. This is the history of every single Palestinian village that was depopulated after 1948. Literally, just like my parents' village, where they went in, destroyed homes, destroyed buildings, built it up to give truth to the lie of a land with no people for a people without a land. People were there. That is what they're doing right now. And the funny thing to me is, as we try to interact, and nobody, I will tell you, Mayor, I have asked for meetings, you stopped responding to me. I think I'm well aware why. But you said everybody can't get what they want. Not the pro-Palestinian side, not the Jewish side. I've come here every week, so you have to look at me, with my Jewish neighbors, my Buddhist neighbors, my Christian neighbors, black, white, Latino, everybody. It's not a pro-Palestinian side, it's a pro-human rights side. And so the idea, the idea that we can't get everything we want. Let me be very clear. What I want is a free Palestine. What we asked for is a ceasefire. That is such a low bar that you can't even trip over it. Just stop dropping bombs. Stop sending money to drop bombs on children and women. Women's History Month. Women who are literally having to rip up shards of tents for sanitary items, who are having babies on filthy floors, C-sections without anesthesia, not able to have enough food so they can produce milk for their babies, that are starving to death. Senator Van Hollen today wrote a letter with other senators to the President asking him to stop sending weapons to Israel while they continue to starve Palestinians. And yet somehow, they just can't access food, right? You eventually change the language to say that Palestinians were killed. They're still not civilians, right? And who's killing them? So mysterious. We can't name Israel, can we? We should, okay? Israel is killing them. Israel is taking these actions. Israel is committing a genocide. Not even asking you to put that in there, but don't dehumanize us. Don't dehumanize us just to put in some words about ceasefire. You can do so much better. I'm offended, but I'm here. And I'm here not because I like it, not because I want to be, but because I feel like I have to be to get some modicum of a ceasefire out of the council that could speak to everything but Palestine.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, I'm Khaosir Talat. I live in Ward 5. And I wasn't going to come and be so negative, but I think I'm going to have to be because I can't be more eloquent than my beautiful child, who you have failed. You have failed her. You have failed 12,000 children who are now dead, children with names like Amel, which means hope, and Noor, which means light. You have failed the hundreds of thousands of children who are starving, whose parents are grinding up meal for donkeys to feed them. You have failed Sam Abbott, in whose building you are sitting, making this resolution that fails the people of Tacoma Park, the Palestinians of Tacoma Park, the Muslims of Tacoma Park, the Christians. Sam Abbott was a Christian Syrian Arab. What would he think? You can do better. And I hope when you go home and explain to your children and your nieces and nephews why you have failed to support the people in Tacoma Park, it makes you feel good.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
My name is Catherine Katzen, and I've been in Ward 2 since 2006. And I just want to echo what everyone else here has said. I'm just horrified every morning when I drive to work to hear about innocent people in Gaza being murdered. Being murdered when they go to get food for their starving children, pulling the limbs of their children out of the wreckage. I'm just horrified. Please put the word "permanent" before "ceasefire." We need a permanent ceasefire. And I'm just horrified that my tax money is paying for this genocide. Please ask to have our tax money redirected away from this killing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Badjal Benna. I misidentified myself last time I spoke as Ward 2. I am Ward 3. I get lost in numbers and maps sometimes. I am here with very little to say because I think most of it has been clearly written, said, spoken to you. I want to reiterate that I, as a Palestinian who's been living in your community for 20 years, feel unseen, feel unheard. I am disappointed. I am angry. I am so angry that I really have run out of words. This is supposed to be a progressive community that has progressive values. Those values, as I have said on numerous occasions, are simple. And they should stand brightest and strongest in the complicated dark days. These are hard days. We are in extreme pain. This is hard to do. And many of us have told you, wearing this puts us in danger, and we do it anyway. This idea that somehow we are brazenly Palestinian, and it is easy for us to declare our humanity when our own council will not declare a permanent ceasefire and has decided it is acceptable for my tax dollars to be used in six weeks to kill me. Not today. You get six weeks to live before I go back to tormenting you. Six weeks to live. Six weeks to deal with rubble and death. Six weeks to deal with terror. Six weeks to deal with horror, or two weeks, or a day, or four days. That is our grace to you before we accept our tax dollars going back to your murder. Why are we asking for a ceasefire? Because our tax dollars are funding a side. They have cut off humanitarian aid and now are giving money to the military to begin putting in some kind of aid. None of this is our values. War is not the answer. Never has been, never will be. And we should stand strong on that in all times. It is not appropriate to kill people. It is not appropriate to starve them. It is not appropriate to destroy an entire area, destroying more than 80% of their homes. I am Palestinian. I chose this community because I thought my child will feel safe here. My child is scared that I come to speak to you. You may have noticed they are not attending these meetings anymore. They do not trust you. And they do not trust that this community will welcome us with open arms. And you have proven them correct. Every week, you dilly-dally and are unsure what proper language there is to say no. No more of our money to murder. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Leona Smith, lived in Ward 1 since 1971. I've been here now for several weeks in a row. All of you should have received my email in which I indicated sort of basic minimum changes that should be made, including getting rid of bilateral, makes no sense, and putting permanent. As everybody said, there's no reason to decide five, six weeks on, oh, it's okay to start bombing and killing children again. The reality is that we're sitting here is because on October 7th, what happened was not an attack on Jews. It was an attack on Israeli occupation that has been going on for over 75 years. I was in Palestine in the 1980s. And I remember being with a delegation from Detroit. And there were Jewish leaders, Muslim leaders, and Christian leaders, including Andy Levin, who is a former congressman in Michigan. And we went to the house of a martyr in Bethlehem. There's a refugee camp called Deheshi Refugee Camp. And there were probably about 45 or 50 of us in the building. Children running around inside, family inside. We were being offered tea. And the Israeli military came and surrounded the entire house. And you know what they started to do? While they had their guns trained on the house, they threw rocks. And they broke almost every single window in that house. Because what they were waiting for was for one of those children to turn around and throw a rock back at them. And what they would have done, and they did it many times, they would have opened fire and mowed down the people in that house. This occupation, this oppression, they were just building it up for what we're seeing now with this genocide. And it is shocking to me that you cannot do the bare minimum of calling for a ceasefire. This is so low that we're asking for. This is so basic. I sent you something about the Girl Scouts. There was a Girl Scout troop that was kicked out because they wanted to make bracelets that said "Free Palestine." Because the bullies at AIPAC and the bullies at JCRC are so invested in making sure every single one of you is terrified that you can't ask for a bloody ceasefire. It doesn't make sense. Do you represent AIPAC or JCRC, or do you represent us? You need to make a decision about standing up and deciding that you're going to be brave. Don't ask us to be brave. Don't ask the people who are black and brown in this community to stand up and be brave. You need to stand up against the bullies at AIPAC because that's who is in your head right now. Please, absolutely call for a permanent ceasefire. Take terror out of the resolution. Don't call it Israel-Hamas war. That's all.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, again, my name's Allison Bondi. I'm on the Steering Committee of Jewish Voice for Peace, D.C. Metro. Please add "permanent" to your ceasefire resolution. When I read your resolution, I saw it as a resolution not to address what's happening in Gaza. It's to address an issue which you all seem to see as local, of trying to appease the people on both sides, it seems, who are coming to you, without proper condemnation of violence. There, I mean, as everyone has noted, you know, there are multiple issues here. But I think one that I want to name, not necessarily as a correction, though I do think it should be corrected, but because it's particularly telling, is that your resolution specifically, it specifically mentions that the city council expresses its unwavering support for all Arab, Israeli, Palestinian, Jewish, Muslim, and all the other members of our community. That indicates to me that you see this as a religious issue. You named Jews and Muslims. Those are not the only people who live in Gaza. And I know that you know that. But you see this as a religious issue. And you see it as Muslims attacking Jews, which, as the person who noted before me, that's not. It's people standing against occupation. So I was here last week, and I was exasperated then. I asked you what it was going to take. Over 30,000 people are dead. Millions are displaced. I don't know why now is the time in history you would try to appease both sides because you want people to be quiet. You don't want to be bothered by this issue anymore. You want to be able to move on from it. I don't know why now is the time in history to do that. I'm just not seeing a reason. So please add "permanent." There are other corrections as well, as people have noted. I'm not going to go into all of that again because they've spoken more passionately than I am currently able to. But thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Hi, my name is Emily Schacter. I live in Ward 5. I've been there for 26 years. Once again, I think I'm going to be the lone voice here. I've spoken here twice over the past three weeks, opposing the idea of drafting a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. But that notwithstanding, here we are, about to pass a resolution. And I just want to tell you all that I deeply appreciate the thoughtful, conscientious, and balanced approach that you've taken. If we're going to have a resolution, then this is the one that it should be, in my opinion. I think you've done a great job, and you have my full support and gratitude. I do have a couple of comments about some of the suggested changes that I've heard today. And one of them is that the suggestion to take out the word "bilateral." What Israel is doing in Gaza is humane and is intolerable.
My bad.
I just want to confirm, you said inhumane?
Inhumane.
Inhumane and intolerable.
Intolerable, I'm sorry, is that not? I said it. Well, you know. I said inhumane. Oh, my God, how could I say anything else? Can I have 10 seconds back? And unfortunately, so inhumane and intolerable. Let me be perfectly clear, okay? Unfortunately, Hamas is participating equally in the fighting and is also responsible for death and destruction. In my opinion, to ignore the fact that the persistence of the war is a shared responsibility between Israel and Hamas is to ignore reality. That's why a bilateral negotiated end to the violence is required. If it's not bilateral, then the fighting and humanitarian crisis will go on. And that's not the goal of this resolution. So I urge you not to purge the word "bilateral." Now, I've also heard the request for the use of the term "permanent." I'm afraid I probably don't fully understand what would be wrong with adding "permanent" because I think we all want a permanent ceasefire. I don't think we, any of us want the killing to go on. So I personally would not oppose that. Now, on the use of the term "a terrorist," I honestly can't understand why anyone would not call what Hamas did in Israel on October 7th a terrorist attack.
The Jacobins, that's why.
Councilmember Small?
It was a premeditated massacre that they planned for years. I think that using arcane definitions of terrorism only distract from the truth and serve to justify what Hamas did. That's it. I think it would be acceptable to change the language from terrorist attack to brutal attack in order to be able to move forward with the resolution. And finally, I just want to add that I think that what I'm hearing a lot today kind of proves the point that I was trying to make over the past couple of weeks. And that is that I don't think that people are asking for a simple ceasefire because the resolution clearly calls for a ceasefire. And instead, I think that what folks want is something much more complicated. If anybody here thinks that they can negotiate peace in the Middle East right now, I think we need to be in the room where it happens. It's not going to happen here. But I support your calling for a resolution. I think you've done a great job. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on voting items before we move to the virtual?
Good evening, Paul Hewitt, Ward 3. I'm overcome by the words of my neighbors. I mean, this is every morning on NPR, they talk about the slaughter. It's unbelievable. All I would ask is that you do what Senator Chris Van Hollen, Senator Bernie Sanders, and others have asked for. They've asked the President to do this. Send all the Iron Dome defensive weapons they want. Stop sending 2,000-pound cluster bombs that are meant to maim and murder people. As far as a balanced issue, it reminds me of Plessy versus Ferguson. Some of you may know what that is. Some may not. That's when they said, "It's okay to have separate but equal schools and everything else. Just keep them in their place." They are murdering these people. They're slaughtering them like cattle, worse than cattle. And they won't even let food, water, electricity, anything in. Just listen to your radio in the morning. I'm absolutely flabbergasted that you are unaware. And some of you seem absolutely, don't have a clue about what's going on. You can't. You cannot understand the situation, not even remotely, or you could not pursue this. And to talk about safety at home when there are people being slaughtered, this is happening worldwide. I mean, this is a particular incident, the most heinous incident since 1948 or 1945. We've got to take a stand. Just take the same stand that Senators Van Hollen and Bernie Sanders have said. Make the US abide by humanitarian, international humanitarian agreed-to law, which is no slaughter of innocent civilians. That's all we want. Just stop killing the people. Let them have food and water, the same thing we would give to anybody as we walk down the street. Just do the right thing, please. Bless you for trying.
Do you have any other public comments on voting items?
Good evening. I'm Jamie Copel, Ward 2, resident for 10 years. And I really want to speak first to the folks here in the room, our neighbors, and just say thank you. I want to say thank you because your remarks are what I will share with my children as an opportunity to learn, as much as I have learned from all of you, as an opportunity to experience and view what solidarity looks like and feels like. Thank you. You know, in my everyday work, I support organizers, organizing for racial justice. And we talk a lot about organizing being a long game. And, you know, I think about that a lot because what we're really saying, what they are really saying, is that this is hard and the tax on their lives and well-being is more than they should ever have to bear. We don't have time for that. We don't have time for this to be a long game. I grew up, I cannot think of one instance in my childhood where Palestine was ever brought to my attention. I had no awareness. I never learned about it in school. And I am very clear from the last few weeks that the same is true for some of you. But where we start is not where we have to finish. I am very familiar with parliamentary process and procedure. And I know that while you may feel the limitations and burdens of your responsibilities and what is to come in the weeks ahead, we can stay here as long as we need to, sorry, to get a resolution that speaks to the spirit, the power, the love, and the call for justice that this community is ready to stand behind you with if you will have the courage to call for a permanent ceasefire. I still believe in you. Please do not disappoint us. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on voting items? Okay. Do we have public comments on voting items virtually?
We do. The first comment is from Christopher Corey, and following that person is Andy Breen.
Hello, am I on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you, the council, for hearing out the community here. I agree, you know, in so many ways with all the prior speakers tonight. I'm a resident going on 13 years. I'm a Palestinian heritage resident. I hope today that you've really heard the wisdom of this community across every age group, every background you can imagine here. And I hope that shaped your thinking as a council tonight. I also would like to see some further movement from this council on looking at if any, any city reserves, long-term investments, where any investments may be in Israeli securities or bonds. I know this is certainly something that happens at the state level. I want to encourage this council to move forward with a principled resolution, much like all the previous speakers have really articulated so well. One that accounts for principles of justice and equality being asked for by the Palestinian people and one that supports the people of Palestine. I actually think we can all ultimately do better here. The bare minimum, as prior speakers have already said, is calling for a permanent ceasefire. If Tacoma Park wants to live up to its reputation, I think it can be a vanguard here and a leader across communities in this nation and call for the explicit liberation and support of the Palestinian people in their lands against settler colonialism, against apartheid, against occupation and the violence being unleashed on them, most recently in Gaza. I also want to emphasize that this, much like many of the other speakers have said, this is not a war between two armies of two sovereign states fighting each other. This is a genocide. It's deemed a plausible genocide by the International Court of Justice. Last January, that same court has taken up arguments around the status of apartheid across all the occupied territories of Palestine, including East Jerusalem, in addition to the absolute carnage that is being experienced by Gaza at the hands of the Israeli military with our weapons, with our tax dollars, and with our full official support in this country. I hope Tacoma Park can be bolder in this case and use the wisdom of the community, the support of the community that is being lent to you if you make the right choice. You will be on the right side of history if you listen today to the... if you listen today to the, what everyone has already articulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comments virtually?
Yes, so Andy Breen should be next. And if Andy is not there, the next person would be Suzette Gardner.
Hello, everyone. I'm Suzette Gardner. I'm a resident of Ward 2 here in Tacoma Park. And I want to say that I agree with pretty much what everybody else is saying, how disappointed they are and how slow and how much time it has taken for the council to get here at this draft resolution and then for it to be insufficient. And I'm also disappointed that, you know, I too moved to Tacoma Park perhaps 15 years, if not more ago, because I valued it as a progressive community. But I'm, I'm now, you know, realizing, you know, through this issue and so many others over the past years, I'm sure you recall the issues you've had with the former police chief and, you know, so many other things, that this is a progressive community for some people and not for everyone. And I'm hoping that at this point, in the history of this town, we can actually really do live the values that Tacoma Park has been known for, or, you know, just to make sure that the values apply to everyone. I keep hearing "never again, not for anyone." So hopefully, we can live, live up to that, that realization. I also want to add my voice to calling for a permanent ceasefire. Anything else is so far from what I would expect of this town. I also think that we shouldn't qualify people or disqualify people when it comes on to whether or not someone should be killed. So the, the line in the resolution that I saw that said, you know, innocent civilians or something like that, we should just say it is wrong to kill anyone, really, you know. We're human beings, and I think we should evolve to that point. Finally, I also, I took issue with the word Christians not being applied to Palestinians in particular. And, you know, I think we should definitely, if we're writing down about religion, we shouldn't feed into the narratives that, you know, there's a monolithic sort of culture there and that Palestinians are all Arabs and Muslims and that, you know, there's such a big group of them. There are Christians among them. Their, their communities have been raised, as far as we've heard through NPR and other mainstream sources. And hopefully, the, the council can get together and really come up with something which reflects the diversity of this community and the intelligence of this community as well. I don't think it takes anything for us to say we should stop killing each other. That does not denigrate anyone, and we all want to live, and surely, everyone else wants to live. Thank you very much for your time and for listening.
Do we have any other public comments on virtual?
We do. Next up is Ron Halber. And then after Ron is Joni Eisenberg.
Can you see me or hear me?
Yes, we hear you. We see you.
Okay, Ron Halber. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ron Halber, and I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Washington, which is the umbrella organization for the 300,000 Greater Washington Jewish community. I truly do appreciate and understand the wide range of emotion and conflict. Nobody can look at the Middle East right now and not go through a heart, and not feel a sense of heart-wrenching about the human suffering that is going on. And I appreciate the people of Tacoma Park and the council, the mayor, for taking this up. However, I must say that this council has no expertise, no jurisdiction, and this resolution will not result in any influence or outcome on the current Middle East. And they, and that the city council was elected and the mayor to focus on, on local affairs and not foreign affairs. I heard some startling things today. The occupation since 1975. That means that Israel does not have a right to exist, and the Jewish state should be destroyed. I have heard apartheid, genocide, ethnic cleansing, morally reprehensible terms, and the people who said this should be absolutely ashamed of themselves. Israel withdrew from Gaza in 2005. For 19 years, there has been an independent Palestinian state in Gaza, yet Hamas has chosen to take all that international aid and instead of building the civil infrastructure for a state to progress for its people, it has built 400 miles of tunnels to commit acts of terrorism, and it has used it for weaponry to target. On October 6th, there was a ceasefire. There was no exchange of violence, except they kept an occasional round of rockets fired by Hamas at Israeli-Palestinian centers. But they crossed over the border and for eight hours committed the deadliest day against the Jewish people since the Holocaust. 1,200 Jews killed, 3,500 wounded. And of those 1,200, we know at least 200 Jewish women and girls, girls sexually mutilated, raped, burned alive. And Israel, like any other democratic nation, has the right to respond. And Israel responded, and you, and you will, and you will see that no other country has ever had, has ever had to fight under such terrible, under such terrible conditions. In a 120-square-mile area, 400 miles of underground tunnel, 40,000.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I think your time is up.
So I would just like to conclude by saying the idea that there can be a permanent ceasefire in place while thousands of armed militants continue to go ahead and vote is unacceptable. And I urge that changes be made in the fourth clause to reflect the fact that thousands of Israelis have been wounded and that 200,000.
Point of order, please turn this off, given the number of people who'd been abused and not allowed to speak.
Counsel, point of order, Councilmember Small. We do not have retaliatory discussions during public comments.
You don't think so?
That is, that is what we do. Right now, what we do is listen.
If Councilmember Small would like to say something to me, I'll be more than happy to address it.
Mr. Halber, your time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hal, Councilmember Small, Mr. Halber, your time is up.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Now, again, I understand that this is very, an issue that is really dear to a number of residents in our community. I understand that. I, I understand it. But I am asking for people to respect our government. And that means, when there are comments, when you come to the mic, you can speak freely for your time. Now, I don't know where the clock went in. But you speak freely during your time. Councilmembers will not disrupt you while you are speaking. And I am asking for members in this room to respect and do the same. We cannot advocate if we can't respect the people that are sitting right next to us. Now, do we have additional people virtually that would like to comment right now?
No more comments on voting items.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now, we are going to move on to any general public comments. Do we have anyone that has general public comments this evening?
You will never witness this again. Tom Gagliardo Hodges Lane, I've submitted my comments in writing. There are many very important things that are more important than what I wanted to talk about. I do want to just say one thing, and that is I want to thank Mayor Cersei, Councilmember Foulter, and Councilmember Gibbons, Gibbons for coming to a, a community meeting, a town hall sponsored by Community Vision Tacoma last Sunday. Mayor and Councilmember Foulter, I give you credit for being in an environment which I'm sure you knew would not be friendly. And yet, you listened and you advocated for your position. And even if I disagree with your position, I respect you for doing what you did. I will come back in three weeks, four weeks, whenever we meet again, and then I'll bore you with my detailed analysis.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments on general items?
Yes. Jessica Landman, Ward 1. I admit it is difficult to talk about another topic, given what we have just been discussing, which is a very profound and difficult topic. But given that also you are going into the budget season, I wanted to leave you with these thoughts since we won't be meeting again for several weeks. The budget situation that the city is facing is very challenging, and we are in the red and have been for several years. And so, anything that you do that changes our taxing authority or our fees that reduces the city's income and puts us further into the red ought to be done with the greatest of caution. And, and I feel that you should really not be taking steps that are revenue-negative or, or that make our revenue streams smaller without taking, really, having a very good reason for doing so. And so, there should be a presumption that that's a bad idea unless we have a very strong evidentiary basis for, for making decisions that would reduce our revenue streams coming into the city. It's got to be a really great idea before you decide to reduce how much money is coming into our treasury. So the other day, we heard from the, from the Housing Authority and Economic Development that we ought to consider a proposal to have a tax holiday for multifamily dwellings that people construct in the city, a 10-year tax holiday for all new multifamily housing construction that was, that's, that comes in for, for people, that we want to give them a break, a tax break for 10 years and then five years for the taxes to come in for those, for those buildings. And I just wanted to say that that is overly broad, overly generous, and has not been justified. And as you go into the budget season, think about what it would mean to be cutting off that income to the city without having a good reason for doing so. It, it risks costing us a lot of money without having any commensurate proven downstream benefits to the city. Meanwhile, there are other potentially less costly ways, the tax breaks that could potentially be devised that would, that would actually bring us housing of the sort that we want, such as affordable units. Like, for example, let, think, consider a tax holiday for any increase in assessed value associated with people putting accessory dwelling units into their homes. Give them a tax holiday for that increase in value to their houses for 10 years. And maybe then you can get some units put in more quickly that would really benefit us. My point is that think about ways to bring those benefits for a lower cost to the city. And the way that you could think about doing this is to create a community panel to assist with thinking about ways to support the budget that includes citizens in it, something that the new city manager has said he's interested in. There are many people who'd like to help. Please call on the community. And don't wait another year till you get started on that. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. My name is David Reed, Ward 2. Following my comments, I will share with each of you a contemporaneous article called "The Struggle for the Future of Tacoma Park." Being contemporaneous, it does not include still-to-come episodes, such as the Commission on Racial Equity, the outcome of the multifamily tax credit just referred to, and any number of unforeseen issues. My article begins recognizing the policy framework by the, set by the Council of Governments, Thrive Montgomery, and Tacoma Park's own Housing and Economic Development Plan. These are all necessary and timely policy and strategy statements. Following that framing, the article explores how county and city planners translated that policy framework into the MMPA that relied exclusively on unregulated, market-driven, for-profit solutions. It explores how county planners provided technical, allegedly neutral, and I believe at times professionally irresponsible scenarios and answers to reasonable questions posed by elected officials. The article then asserts that is the dynamics between the county planners and city elected officials that has created outcomes that are against the best interests of the broader Tacoma Park community. And it says that elected officials yielded consistently to the pressures and proposals of county and city planners. For example, why didn't elected officials demand a map of the geographic locations of 3,500 residential units and a map of the footprint of new residential buildings? It was available. And why did elected officials agree to approve a plan without independent racial equity analysis? Why did elected officials approve a plan without even a notional transportation study? Why did elected officials forsake the broad community-wide agreement on building a new housing on Site 23 in order to impose a uniform, one-dimensional plan for maximizing future development flexibility, it was called, in the rest of the area? And so on, and so on. The article also asserts that county and city planners and elected officials skirted obligatory social equity analysis and dismissed community members as basically uninformed and self-interested respondents who didn't understand the complexity of housing markets. I hope you explore the provided evidence in the article analysis at your pleasure. What is incontrovertible is that the general abaisance of elected officials to the technical vision the planners has recreated a regrettable rift, as Mayor witnesses passed Sunday, within the broader Tacoma Park community. Unfortunately, that rift promises to continue in light of plans to review the city's rent stabilization law and the recent multifamily tax credit. That rift is part of this council's legacy and responsibility in coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Halber.
Donna Victoria, Ward 6. I'm here to update council on our New Hampshire Gardens Community Association's Traffic Subcommittee. They've been meeting since July, when we had a very productive meeting in our ward about the extreme amount of traffic we're getting from. You may have noticed they're building a train station at University in New Hampshire. And everybody in this room and from a much wider area now comes down Wildwood Drive. Anyway, neighbors have been working on it. We developed a survey. We honed answers from that. I'm going to submit where we are at on this, because we were suggested that we had time for a pilot program before you go to your equity situation in July, which I'm very excited about the potential about. Because, again, the emotional cost of coming up here and having to talk about this after what I sat through is why my neighborhood doesn't show up for shit. It's really a weird situation. And your guys aren't meeting for a month. So I also, since I have a minute and a half, I want to thank you profoundly for voting for the Minor Master Plan. I have avoided this stuff. But I have lived here for 32 years. And I bought a house for $162,000. That's probably roughly seven figures now. I love my neighborhood. I'm going to leave the best street in America for a more walkable neighborhood. I'm watching more cars come through. And I think it is a progressive value to build affordable housing for Black and Brown people, because it is sorely missing here, sorely missing in this city. And if you are like me, and you can come here and say, "I've lived at 1104 Merwood Drive for 35 years in a single-family home," please don't lecture me on racial equity of keeping our idyllic neighborhood. We are within the Beltway. Housing needs to be built. Am I out of time yet? God, I could rant about other things, but I'm tired. Going to go get some water.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other general public comments? Okay. Do we have any general public comments online?
We do. We have Tierney Acosta.
Hi, give me one second.
I believe she's on. Here she is.
Hi, Mayor Cersei, Tacoma Park City Council members, community members, and neighbors. My name is Tierney Acosta. I'm currently a student at Montgomery College, specifically the Tacoma Park Silver Spring campus in Ward 1. I'm also-
We are, I'm trying to not have this issue happen again. We can't see the clock. Okay, but go back. Give her a full three. All right, there you go.
Hi, Mayor Cersei, Tacoma Park City Council members, community members, and neighbors. My name is Tierney Acosta. I am a student at Montgomery College, specifically at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus here in Ward 1. I'm also the president and founder of the Permaculture Club on campus. So the newest project that we are working on is the newest food forest in Tacoma Park. A food forest is a permanent planting of a mixture of fruit and nut-bearing perennials, annual vegetables and herbs, medicinal plants, and native plants. This project aims to support our students, our greater surrounding communities, our pollinators, and our non-human community members. This project aims to fight not only food insecurity but habitat loss as well in one project as a collective effort. Projects like this matter because 40% of our students, specifically at our Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus of Montgomery College, are facing food insecurity. Food insecurity means that these students do not have access to fresh, local, healthy, nutritious produce and food on a regular basis. This is ultimately a reflection of our greater surrounding communities and our needs as a community. I'd like to emphasize again that almost 40% of our students on campus, it's almost half. We live in one of the wealthiest counties in one of the wealthiest states in the United States of America, and we not only can do better, but we must do better. And that is the aim for this club and this project. This past weekend, we had a work weekend on March 9th and 10th, and we moved 40 cubic yards of mulch provided by the city of Tacoma Park. We used recycled and donated coffee roasting bags and cardboard as weed layer, and over 20 volunteers showed up each day, which was fantastic. Philip Bogdanoff performed a land acknowledgement to acknowledge the Piscataway and Nanda Chak nations whose land we are occupying. And as a club and community, we planted our first fruit-bearing plants, two hibush blueberry plants, which is very exciting. They're native to Maryland, and we will be able to harvest from them this coming season. I'd love to give a thank you to Montgomery College, specifically the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, our coordinator and designers, the students and Permaculture Club members that came out, as well as the neighbors and volunteers that continue to support this effort and this project. I'd love to give a special shout-out and thanks to Councilmember Randy Gibson, who showed up to help and helped us move lots of mulch. We invite everyone viewing, as well as Mayor Cersei and the city council members, to our next work day or weekend, whose dates will be determined very soon. And we are also taking donations right now of seeds, cuttings, native plants, and tools. And Jessie has my email if anyone's interested in that or has any questions. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for resetting the clock also.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other general public comments?
We do. We have one last speaker, Mary Machui.
Hello?
Hi, Mary Jane. We can hear you. I just want to make sure we can see the clock. Give us one second, Mary Jane. Okay, there you go.
I know. I noticed that you said it's developmental disabilities. I mean, I'm too messed up right now. I can't take this stress. My son will probably end up living homeless. My health is deteriorating. I cannot take it. Why don't you care about us? The people who spoke today spent one-tenth of the time and energy to help somebody like my son who has developmental and psychiatric disabilities. This Tacoma Park might be a much better place. Please remember, charities should start at home. Don't hate your next-door neighbors. But then, don't forget, but demonstrate. I see too much of this in Tacoma Park. You care about everybody else, but you don't care about your neighbors. My son and people like him need help desperately. Thank you. They need help. He was born here. My son was born here, the son of an immigrant who was shot in the head and has lived his life with neurological damage. He will probably end up living in the street. He collapsed in his rehab now. No one cares about him. I'm trying to keep my sanity, trying to help him and my son at the same time. All the people were complaining and saying, and I think Mr. Smalls did something, thank you, mentioned my name. Thank you. I hope it wasn't in vain, but thank you. I appreciate it. And why don't you care about us? Why? Why? What did we do to you? Why do you keep forgetting us? Why do you say you can't help us? Why? Why? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machui. Do we have any other public comments this evening?
No.
Okay. All right. We are going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to comport myself with grace and honor here. I'm going to try and do it fast. I apologize for speaking fast. The reality about this is that it's ironic to me that the easiest thing for me to say about this is that I'm good at government, and I'm telling the story why. I'm good at government. I smoke cigarettes, and I call spades spades all at the same time for the same reason. And that is because I spent my life weird. I have a tick of positive sorts, because I didn't find out I had it until I went to Yale, and that is that I have a really sticky memory. I can remember nearly everything I've ever read if I care about it. And so it made me smart. It made me alarmingly smart. And I had red hair. There's some phonetic things about Malcolm X, whatever, whatever. And I was in Decatur, Illinois, and that was a place where they were trying to develop an entire society all at once, because we had our little place off of the beaten path. And so even though I wasn't from there, and it was a place that everyone was from Brownsville, Tennessee, I was constantly being asked to go speak in front of people, school boards, churches, whatever else. And so all the kids around me really hated that. So I got a lot of grief from people. They made fun of me and a number of things. White kids, black kids, didn't really matter. And I was talking to the deputy city manager today, and I was talking about how people generally tend to revert to their mean. And, you know, you put too many people in one place together, then the mean is going to happen if they have the same set of sociological conditions and circumstances. It's Jurgen Habermas, but it doesn't really matter. So the crux of the issue is, I destroyed every possible test and every possible grade that I could without taking my books home, for the purpose of just being in the top 12 in Decatur, Illinois, because I didn't want to go for valedictorian, because you had to take typing. And I didn't like typing. Kind of figured out why. Now, at the end of the day, I ended up getting scholarships to go nearly every place in the world, but none of them were African-American scholarships or affirmative action scholarships, because people would always say, "Well, you know, Jason." And so I never got any of those. And then I was a student by president at DePaul with a 98% degree campus. I was the first independent student by president in history. Then I got a state finalist interview for a Rhodes Scholar. Then I went to Yale. Then my dad died. And the funny thing about Yale is, the only group of people in the world who will talk spades with people who are really, really smart are people who are someplace where they're by themselves. I call it the Tierney the Uncool. And so as a result, what happens a lot is, you get to talk real general with people who have ambitions, and they talk about things, about being president and non-presidents, whatever, whatever. And when you walk up to people, they say weird things to you when you're not really trying that stuff. So what you do is you get really good at grades, so that you can defend yourself in these situations. Then you come to DC, and you deal with people who are in Best Black Syndrome usually, and they don't like it when you come in here just trying hard. And so to end, what I will say is that single-issue voters do bother the heck out of me, even the ones at my house. And I will leave you with 10 more seconds of in bondage. I would be wandering in distant fields where man and burdened beast live leisurely, and the old earth is kind and ever yields her goodly gifts to all her children free, where life is fairer, lighter, less demanding, and boys and girls have time and space for play before they come for years of understanding. Somewhere, I would be singing, "Far Away." For life is greater than the thousand wars men wage for it in their insatiate lust. And men will remain like eternal stars when all that shines today is drifting dust. But I am bound with you in your mean graves, oh, black man, simple slaves of ruthless slaves.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson.
Thank you. I wanted to mention a few things. They've been referenced earlier, events, that is. One, having to do with the Minor Master Plan and the Community Vision Affordable Housing Town Hall that, as was mentioned, the mayor and my colleague here and myself attended. I thought it was a powerful and constructive event. It included Mark Elrich as one of the main speakers. And Mark reported that the equity study that he has commissioned as county executive should be out this week. So I'm looking forward to it, and I presume the council will as well. The county council met on Tuesday to discuss the Minor Master Plan. No vote was taken, fortunately. And a follow-up meeting date has not been determined, but that's something important for us to follow, for those interested. I also wanted to follow up the comment by the woman from Montgomery College. That was a great use of people power and mulch from the city. I thank the city's contribution to start a food forest there on what's kind of degraded turf grass, so it can be improved. I also want to say thanks to our staff, Dori Estrada, for holding a solar night, I think it was called Go Solar Tacoma Park. I was a panel member. There was five presenters. Excellent information, a lot of good information for people that want to put solar on their house tops. And I was pleased to be a small part of that presentation. And lastly, I just want to say thanks to the passion, presentations, discussions, comments by the folks in this room. We will not probably have something perfect, but I am anxious to get something moving forward that deals with ceasefire, that deals with humanitarian aid, and deals with hostages. That's the bottom line for me. And again, I apologize. It won't be perfect, but let's get something. I hope that we can get something tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. You stole my thunder. Seriously. Thank you for your passion, for your comments, and for trying really hard to treat each other with respect. It is hard. And I appreciate it, and I hope we can continue to talk about these issues and make all of our residents feel welcome and heard and treated with respect. I too am anxious to adopt a resolution, and I'm going to apologize in advance if we don't get all the words the way that, if we inadvertently offend anybody in the choice of our words, because it is a hard thing to do, for me at least. And I have two announcements. One is retrospective. I'm sorry I missed the Community Vision Affordable Housing workshop, and I'm sorry I wasn't there at the Go Solar, but I was at the National League of Cities Conference this last few days downtown, which was an opportunity to visit federal agencies and go shopping for money. And I will be talking with the city manager and bringing in some other people as appropriate for the different things I found. Yeah, you all are looking at me, because you remember last year when I came back with all these great ideas.
I think we all did.
Yeah. And also to hear the latest on federal climate and other issues that are important to the city here. And looking forward, next Tuesday, March 19th, thank you to the police department for hosting a Ward 2 Public Safety Meeting at the Recreation Center, 7 to 9. Please join us. There'll also be a Zoom hookup for people who can't make it in person. Thanks.
Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. I just want to say I genuinely deeply appreciate every single person who's shown up, not only today, but every other week for weeks. It's a lot of hours of your time, and I know that you could be somewhere else. It's a demonstration of your passion. And I want to speak to one of the points in particular about us consulting people and residents throughout the community. I mean, I will tell you that I myself, and there are people in this room, I would appreciate if you'd share with your neighbors, some of you who are in this room. I spent several hours talking to some of the individuals that are in this room, and many, many more. I knocked on doors, and I know I am not alone. That speaks to all the council members that are up here. And we went to agencies and entities and sought the wisdom that we cannot and do not have as municipal officials necessarily. It's not why you voted for us. I would just ask you to consider that as you have assumed otherwise. And so much so that I was not able to attend the community event. I have not been home most of the five nights of every single week with my family, and I have three children, 17, 13, and 7. And it was not my intention to spend my council two years like this. My children are wondering what has happened to me. I spent my Sunday afternoon ice skating with my seven-year-old, who had eagerly invited me to come with her. And I do ask everyone, and I wrote something out to my residents today, to consider when we are asked to talk about these national and international issues. And I know that emotions are high tonight, so it may not be the time to say this. But it's given me great agony and pain in my own home with every member of my immediate family and more, that, as I know, it's giving you a lot of emotional pain, but that we spend this many weeks on these issues. And there are a lot of things that are happening also right here in our backyards, and I have had to set every one of them aside for seven weeks. And now I will say there are other major issues aloft. Haiti is exploding, and the neighbors that live across the street from me are from Haiti also. And I am not saying that these are similar situations. Please don't misunderstand me. But please do understand that there are major, major trade-offs that we are all, each of us, making, and we are doing our best. So please give us grace. And in my 20 seconds, there's a wonderful Stores Next Door event that happened tonight, hosted by Discover Long Branch before I came here. Really enjoyed that. If you've never been, I encourage you to go. And we will have a Monday night and Thursday night, Juneteenth and Flower Avenue celebration Zooms. Please join us for something we can agree on, and the Ward 5 Zoom meeting on Tuesday, March 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Okay. See you no more lights. First, I just want to say thank you all so much for coming out. I know that this has been long. This has been hard. We've strived to listen. One of the things I've said that we can't deny that international issues can have local impacts. But we also have to be mindful of how to balance that local impact. And so we really worked really hard to figure out ways to craft a resolution that met the spirit of what we all agree needs to happen, which is peace, killing to stop, humanitarian aid to be provided. But we also have to recognize that locally, we've even seen over the last few weeks that this is an issue that is a multi-generational issue that impacts different households differently, and we have to be mindful of that. So I appreciate, again, everyone coming out. I appreciate the fact that we are even, you know, some communities aren't even able to get to this point, where there is actually a resolution drafted and people are actually able to vote on one. So I encourage you all, again, to please, you know, be mindful of the challenge that was before us, recognizing it pales in comparison to what is happening abroad, but the different weights and the different things that we need to take into consideration as we're drafting these types of resolutions. Couple other things real quick, because I only got 59 seconds. I had the COG Board meeting today. Had a great opportunity to hear about some of the regional principles for equity and things that local communities can do to further equity in terms of the work that they're doing. Also, the TPB Regional Transportation Plan, really trying to figure out opportunities and pathways for addressing transportation issues in our area. and pathways for addressing transportation issues in our area. Another big thing is thank you to the Community Vision folks. I appreciate it, having to come out on Sunday, even though I felt like I was in the hot seat, but it, it was a welcomed hot seat to be in. So I appreciate the opportunity to be there and participate in that event. Also, just want to echo thanking Dory for the solar workshop. If, I think it will, it's recorded, I think, and is available, please watch it. It is, it was such a great opportunity to hear from experts on things that you can do in your home to make your home more energy efficient. Please watch it, because I learned, I need to do another house audit. Another big thing is on Sunday, there's a group of residents that are having a fundraiser for childhood cancer. It's at two o'clock in Tacoma Bevco. So really want to encourage folks to, to come out and support that cause. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to City Manager Disparito.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and, and guests. Report on several departments, please. From the Housing and Community Development Department, the Tacoma Park Tenant Survey is now live. Renters are encouraged to complete the survey, which should take five to 10 minutes to complete and will help inform city policies and programs. A link to the survey will be included in tomorrow's comments on the city website. The County Council, as mentioned by Councilmember Gibson, the County Council held a work session yesterday at the Tacoma Park Minor, on the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan to discuss the Planning Board draft and the recommendations of the Planning, Housing and Parks Committee. County staff presented the staff report, highlighting the recommendations of the Minor Master Plan report, community feedback, the county executive's comments, and the Planning, Housing and Parks Committee's recommendations. Council members did not have any comments or objections during the presentation. Councilmembers Juwondo, Stewart, and Fonny Gonzalez made comments supportive of the plan at the end of the discussion. Council President Andrew Friedson concluded this agenda item by saying he looked forward to moving the plan to a formal vote. More information, including the full county staff report, is available on the city's webpage. A link will be posted tomorrow with the city manager's comments. From the library, the library awarded a $500 grant towards the Dia de los Niños event next month that celebrates Spanish language and multilingual literacy. Local author Molly Dresner from Chevy Chase will be at the March 26th session of Circle Time to present her new book, We All Fall Down, which is a short story. Favorite Poem Night, an annual event for all ages, will be held on the evening of Wednesday, April 24th this year, so everyone has plenty of time to put it on their calendar and hopefully bring a favorite poem to read or recite. From the Police Department, the Police Department will be holding a community meeting to discuss public safety issues in Ward Two. Police Department staff will be providing an update on recent incidents in Ward Two and provide an overall overview of crime stats, trends, and security measures put in place to address these trends. The meeting will take place on Tuesday, March 19th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue. The meeting will be in person, and a Zoom webinar will also be available for folks to join and ask questions. A registration link will be posted in tomorrow's comments. From the Public Works Department, and again as referenced by Councilmember Gibson and Mayor Circe, last night was the Let's Go Solar Tacoma Park Event, which attracted about 60 attendees. We appreciate, we appreciated the excellent presentations from the various speakers and thoughtful questions from the audience. All follow-up materials, including a recording of the webinar, will be posted on the city's website under the Go Solar webpage. For further, for other questions, please reach out to our Sustainability Manager, Dory, at Dorothy E. at TacomaParkMD.gov. From the Recreation Department, program registration for spring and summer classes opens soon. March 8th, it will open for those with current scholarships. March 15th, for all city of Tacoma Park residents, and March 22nd for non-residents. Upcoming teen camps. This year, there are several new camp offerings for Tacoma Park teenagers, both for spring break and summer vacation. For spring break, which will be March 25th through the 29th, there are two I'd like to refer to. One is Filmmakers in Action for grades six through eight. This camp focuses on the art of filmmaking, and participants will have the opportunity to contribute to a docu-series about Tacoma Park. Facilitated by Action Youth Media, this camp will be held in the Teen Lounge from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM each day. Teens will be able to express their creativity and highlight the cultural diversity of the Tacoma Park community. And the other is Teen Playwrights Camp for grades eight through 10, and it's centered around the creative writing process behind theater and plays. Facilitated by Young Playwrights Theater, this camp offers enriching activities and an opportunity for teens to develop their own original piece to be presented at the end of the camp. Camp will be held during the same week, but from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM each day in the dance From the Finance Department, we are pleased to inform you that the city of Tacoma Park received another distinguished budget presentation award from GFOA. This is the sixth year that the city has received this award. This year, the city received outstanding scoring grades in two categories. The first was for revenues. The budget includes the revenue source, descriptions, and analysis of major revenues. Revenues were enhanced, were with trend charts, and the revenue discussion is very comprehensive. And second, long-range financial plans. The financial forecast was presented with assumptions for the general fund, capital, and debt. The financial forecast section is detailed and informative. So congratulations to our great finance department team. And finally, from the city manager's office, we have reached another milestone in the Mental Health Counselor Pilot Program. Over the past two weeks, Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services and city staff interviewed four outstanding candidates for the two open counselor roles. Candidate hiring recommendations have been transmitted to the Montgomery County Human Resources Department, and we now await the county's internal hiring and vetting process. With any luck, we, we hope to be onboarding these two staff and commencinging the program by the end of this fiscal year, June 30th. And an employee highlight, Information Technology, IT Department, a huge shout-out to Lars DiSalvio, our exceptional IT project specialist. Lars's dedication and expertise are invaluable assets to our team, and we feel truly blessed to have him onboard. Please keep up the fantastic work, Lars. This concludes my report for this evening. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And as I have promised our, my colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and make sure that we get a break. So if we can come back at 10:00, and then we will reconvene with the voting session.
All right. We're back.
Oh, I didn't realize all of these folks were still here.
Ah, we're back. Are we back? I think we're back. Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you all for allowing us to have a little bit of a break. So, next on the agenda is the voting session. The voting session this evening, we have three things. So, I can keep track of my papers. The resolution for calling for bilateral ceasefire hostage release and humanitarian aid. The second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers, as well as the second reading ordinance approving a contract with Mallorca Services for the stabilization of the vacant Washington McLaughlin school site at 28, I'm sorry, at 6501 Poplar Ave. Would someone like to, just as a reminder to colleagues, we need to move the resolution. It will need to be seconded in order for us to discuss. Then, we will talk through any amendments or adjustments, and then, we will bring that item to a vote. So, would someone like to move the resolution calling for bilateral ceasefire hostage release and humanitarian aid to Gaza?
So moved.
Or seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter for moving and Councilmember Gibson for seconding. Just want to talk through a number of friendly amendments that have been put forward and shows in the markup of the version that folks have right now. There's a few that are just some editorial things to provide more balance to the language. But there are a couple of other points that I do want to highlight. There's a couple of other additional, kind of small amendments that unfortunately were left off. So, for example, the whereas, one, two, three, four, five whereas clause should read, "Since October 7, 2023, the ensuing Israel-Hamas war killed tens of thousands of Palestinians and wounded tens of thousands more." The next whereas clause that also has an additional friendly amendment, "Whereas thousands of Israelis and other foreign nationals have also been killed or injured." And then, the following whereas clause, "Millions of Palestinians as well as tens of thousands of Israelis who live in Gaza or nearest borders have been displaced." And then, I'll kind of walk through the adjustments along with a rationale as to why. So, for the first whereas clause, residents rightfully pointed out, all killing is bad, so we should cut regardless of faith or ethnicity. So, that has been removed. In the one, two, three, four, five whereas clause, we just went through that. But another adjustment was just making the numbers where, as we were going through this, it felt like depending on the source, the numbers were slightly different. So, to try to account for them, we just, as was recommended by residents, changing the whereas clause to make it just "since October 7, 2023", to allow for a little bit more flexibility, given that the conflict is still happening. We've just talked through the next whereas clause, where we added, "Thousands of Israelis and other foreign nationals have also been killed or injured." So, we removed reference to the Israel-Hamas war there. The next one, "Millions of Palestinians as well as tens of thousands who live in Gaza or nearest borders have been displaced." And then, the next whereas clause, previously had hundreds of thousands. We've replaced that with, "Millions of Palestinians are at imminent risk of death in Gaza without access to necessities such as food, clean drinking water, shelter, and medical attention." If folks will indulge me, I'm going to skip to the next modification. So, the council in its adjustments or friendly amendments wanted to highlight places where we're calling for a permanent solution. So, in the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, the 12th whereas clause, it now reads, "The community in the city of Tacoma Park across all faith groups and backgrounds supports an end to the continued violence and hopes for a permanent solution where Palestinians and Israelis can live side by side and enduring peace, safety, justice, and dignity." And then, the next, now therefore be it resolved. That's just a typo. We needed to lowercase the "the." And then, the be it further resolved. The language that is in the markup that is posted is, "Be it further resolved" that the city council urges our federal elected officials to support and work for the adoption of policies aimed at achieving the goals of this resolution. Originally reads, "Including creating pathways to bring permanent peace to the region." I would like to propose a friendly amendment to my friendly amendment to say instead that the city council urges our federal elected officials to support and work for the adoption of policies aimed at achieving the goals of this resolution, including supporting permanent peace in the region. The next, I just want to make sure I don't need to vote on that. The next whereas clause did not change. And then, the, I guess this is the one, two, three, four. I can make it easy if I just call it the further resolve, the resolve clause. One, two, three. The third resolve clause has been modified, and it now reads, "The city council expresses its unwavering support for all Arab, Israeli, Palestinian, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, and all other members of the community who are impacted, each of whom has the right to learn, work, worship, gather, advocate, mourn, express themselves, and celebrate freely and without fear of violence, and we have added or discrimination." As a friendly amendment. So, I would like to move the version of the resolution with the friendly amendments that I've walked through. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. And I don't know who did it. Councilmember DeBala. So, with that, given the version that we're working on, I just want to see if there are any comments or questions. Okay. Seeing none, I would like to call the vote. All those in favor of the amended resolution calling for bilateral ceasefire hostage release and humanitarian aid in Gaza, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any oppose? Any abstain? All right. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. And I will make sure that you get that last. So, with that, would someone like to move the second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban a, to add a ban on combustible engine-powered leaf blowers?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Are there any comments or questions? All right. Given that this is a second reading ordinance with a clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Fulter?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
All right. So, now, we're going to move to the single reading ordinance. I'm so sorry. I'm trying to get it together. The single reading ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for stabilization services for Washington-
All right. We're back.
Oh, I didn't realize all of these folks were still here.
Ah, we're back. Are we back? I think we're back. Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you all for allowing us to have a little bit of a break. So, next on the agenda is the voting session. Voting session, um, this evening, we have three things. So, if I can keep track of my papers. The resolution for calling for bilateral ceasefire, hostage release, and humanitarian aid. The second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban combustible engine-powered leaf blowers, as well as the second reading ordinance approving a contract with Mallorca Services for the stabilization of the vacant Washington McLaughlin school site at twenty, I'm sorry, at sixty-five oh one Poplar Ave. Would someone like to, just as a reminder to colleagues, um, we need to move the resolution. It will need to be seconded in order for us to discuss. Then we will talk through any amendments or adjustments, um, and then we will bring that item to a vote. So would someone like to move the resolution calling for bilateral ceasefire, hostage release, and humanitarian aid to Gaza?
So moved.
Or seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter for moving and Councilmember Gibson for seconding. Just want to talk through, um, a number of friendly amendments that have been put forward and shows in the markup of the version that folks have right now. There's a few that are just, um, some editorial things to provide more balance to the language. But there are, um, a couple of, um, other points that I do want to highlight. There's a couple of other additional, kind of small, um, amendments that unfortunately were, were left off. So, for example, um, the whereas, one, two, three, four, five, whereas clause, um, should read, "Since October seventh, twenty twenty-three, the ensuing, ensuing Israel-Hamas war killed tens of thousands of Palestinians and wounded tens of thousands more." The next whereas clause that also has an additional friendly amendment, "Whereas thousands of Israelis and other foreign nationals have also been killed or injured." And then the following whereas clause, "Millions of Palestinians as well as tens of thousands of Israelis who live in Gaza or nearest borders have been displaced." And then I'll kind of walk through the adjustments along with a rationale as to why. So, for the first whereas clause, um, residents rightfully pointed out, um, all killing is, is, um, uh, uh, bad, so we should, um, cut regardless of faith or ethnicity, so that has been removed. In the one, two, three, four, five whereas clause, we just went through that, but another adjustment was, um, just making the, the numbers where, as we were going through this, it felt like depending on the source, the numbers were slightly different, so to try to account for them, um, we just, um, as was recommended by, by residents, changing the whereas clause to make it just since October the seventh, um, to allow for a little bit more, um, flexibility, given that the, the conflict is still happening. Um, we've just talked through the next whereas clause, uh, where we added the thousands of Israelis and other foreign nationals have also been killed or injured, so we removed reference to the Israel Hamas war there. Um, the next one, millions of Palestinians as well as tens of thousands, we just talked through that. Um, have, who live in Gaza or nearest borders have been displaced and are, um, or unable to leave the area due to violence since October seventh. The next whereas clause previously had hundreds of thousands, we've replaced that with millions of Palestinians are at imminent risk of death in Gaza without access to necessities such as food, clean drinking water, shelter, and medical attention. If folks will indulge me, I'm gonna skip to the next modification. So, the council in its adjustments or friendly amendments, um, wanted to highlight, um, places where, um, we're calling for a, a permanent solution. So, in the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, the twelfth whereas clause, it now reads, "The community in the city of Tacoma Park across all faith groups and backgrounds supports an end to the continued violence and hopes for a permanent solution where Palestinians and Israelis can live side by side in enduring peace, safety, justice, and dignity." And then the next, um, now therefore be it resolved, that's just a typo, we needed to lowercase the the. Um, and then the be it further resolved, um, the language that is in the markup that is posted, um, is be it further resolved that the city council urges our federal elected officials to support and work for the adoption of policies aimed at achieving the goals of this resolution originally reads, "Including creating pathways to bring permanent peace to the region." I would like to propose a friendly amendment to my friendly amendment, um, to say instead, um, that the city council urges our federal elected officials to support and work for the adoption of policies aimed at achieving the goals of this resolution, including supporting permanent peace in the region. The next, um, I just wanna make sure I don't need to vote on that. Um, the next whereas clause, um, did not change, and then the, um, I guess this is the one, two, three, four. I can make it easy if I just call it the further resolve, the resolve clause, one, two, three. The third resolve clause, um, has been modified and it now reads, "The city council expresses its unwavering support for all Arab, Israeli, Palestinian, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, and all other members of the community who are impacted, each of whom has the right to learn, work, worship, gather, advocate, mourn, express themselves, and celebrate freely and without fear of violence, and we have added or discrimination." As a friendly amendment. So, I would like to move the, uh, version of the resolution with the friendly amendments that I've walked through. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you very much, and I don't know who did, Councilmember DeBala. So, with that, um, given the version that we're working on, I just want to see if there are any comments or questions. Seeing none, um, I would like to, uh, call the vote. All those in favor of the amended resolution, call it for bilateral ceasefire, hostage release, and humanitarian aid in Gaza, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any oppose? Any abstain? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. And I will make sure that you get that last. So, with that, um, would someone like to, uh, move the second reading ordinance amending the city code to ban a, to add a ban on combustible engine-powered leaf blowers?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Are there any comments or questions? All right. Um, given that this is a second reading ordinance, with the clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Fulter?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
All right. So now we're gonna move to the, uh, the single reading ordinance. I'm so sorry. I'm trying to get it together. Uh, the single reading ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for stabilization services for Washington McLaughlin vacant school site. And just as a reminder for folks, this is the review and authorization of the contracts for selective vendor for the NED grant-funded stabilization services for Washington McLaughlin School. Staff is previously, previously, uh, presented on this project. Would someone like to move the second reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala for seconding. Um, with the clerk, given this ordinance, clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Fulter?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small? Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay. We are cooking with grease, y'all, I'm not complaining. Okay, we're gonna move on to the presentation for this evening, the Police Department Annual Report.
Chief, we, uh-
Oh, you want me to-
We have a plan for you up here.
Oh, okay. All right, I will.
You have to take minutes though.
Did you just, I can, I can do it from here. I can do it from here. I'm fine from here. Yeah, yeah. Unfamiliar territory, I usually do it from the dive, so.
Usually if it's someone standing, they think that they're gonna go real fast.
Uh, I usually go faster from there, so if you want me-
No, no, stay there. I like where you're at.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, members of council, and stakeholders that are watching. I'm here to present our Police Department Annual Report. Uh, joining me this evening is our senior staff. I'm proud to introduce Deputy Chief Shabu Philipos, uh, our Operations Commander Cody Evans, and our newly promoted Captain Michelle Holmes is here with us. So they may answer questions specific to their area of responsibility. Uh, before I get into the annual report, I want to speak a little bit about the culture and mission of our Police Department, and I think this is really important. Um, our officers are committed to being guardians of the community. We're committed to promoting public safety while upholding the rights and dignity of all of our residents. This involves fostering a culture of transparency and accountability. Good, bad, or indifferent, you're gonna hear it from us. Uh, we use frequent and timely communications via social media. Uh, we also have, uh, a weekly and daily information that we put out about significant incidents in the city. Uh, we are also committed to community policing, uh, collaborative problem solving with all our community stakeholders, and continuing to build partnerships and trust with all of our constituents. Um, I do want to, before I get into the report, thank the men and women of the Police Department. I'm continue to be so proud of the members of our Police Department. I cannot stress enough, the support of our staff is critical to the continuing positive accomplishments that we've made within our Police Department. About seventy-five percent of our Police Department has been hired in the last six years. We are a diverse department, we speak six different languages, uh, we have various backgrounds, and I think that's really important to the trust that we have with our community. Uh, now to the annual report, the purpose of the annual report is to provide information about your Police Department, about crime in Tacoma Park, and about accomplishments within the department, and to explain to how every individual can partner with the Police Department to make our community safer. And twenty twenty, twenty, at twenty twenty-three, we continue to cultivate relationships with our stakeholders. We held several ward-specific public safety meetings, and one, it was just mentioned that we're gonna have one in Ward Two next week. We've already held one in Ward Six, uh, earlier this year. Uh, those are really important because it gives us an opportunity for, to delve in specifically to the issues within the ward and the city. Now, usually we go over the, the citywide crime stuff, but we're also able to address city-specific, ward-specific issues. We're always looking at ways to better connect and serve our residents. Uh, nationally and locally, we've seen an increase in hate crimes against our LGBTQ community. A bomb threat at the drag scene storytime earlier this year at the Motor Cat, uh, really shook the community up. Um, you know, it, it, we see it happen nationally, we see it happen regionally, but we don't see it happening here. Um, so, uh, we've worked really closely with our LGBT community to denounce hate and ensure that, that there are safe spaces for all. We're pleased to announce that we've created an LGBTQ liaison officer. Uh, Corporal Cindy Torres, uh, has been selected as our new LGBT liaison. This role is vital, promoting inclusive, inclusive, inclusivity, and strengthening relationships between our department and the LGBTQ community. As a liaison, Corporal Torres' role will be to create safe and welcoming spaces for members of the community to be heard and find necessary support to address needs. Uh, you'll find this year's annual report is designed a little bit differently, it's structured a little bit differently. Thank you to my assistant Kathy Plebey, who did a phenomenal job in putting this together, and all the staff that presented, uh, or that supplied the information for the report. Uh, while you may, you will find the report to be extensive and cover a lot of topics. Uh, there were fewer requests that we had from Councilmember Gibson and other members of the community to add additional information. One of the things that was requested is the Police Department to add response times for both emergency and non-emergency calls to the annual report. So we're gathering that information now, uh, and we'll be distributing it this year and last year, uh, prior to next year's annual report. Um, I understand this is important to some of our community members to understand how our Police Department operates, how quickly we respond, and so on and so forth. Into the report, the city of Tacoma Park saw a fifty percent increase in Part One reported crime over last year. Um, I want to say, just, just to state that, um, any percentage increases, don't be alarmed by those, even though that is a significant increase and we're really concerned about it. Uh, we have very low crime historically in the city. Uh, so, just for an example, this was an increase, uh, in twenty twenty-two, we had seven hundred and sixteen reportable Part One crimes. So Part One crimes are serious crimes, are robberies, are murders, uh, burglaries, so on and so forth, compared to about, uh, one thousand seventy-three reportable incidents in twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is mainly due to an increase in larceny, shopliftings, robberies, assaults, theft from autos, and auto thefts. Um, as I said earlier, don't look at the overall percentages, um, as, maybe look at the numbers if you're comparing it. So example, homicides, if we had one last year and it's increased to two this year, the percentage is gonna be tremendous. Many agencies locally and nationally are experiencing this trend. It's not unique to us. Uh, we are doing everything we can to make sure that we are addressing crime issues here in the city. Um, I want to stress to our residents that we're doing everything we can, like I said, and I will touch on some of those initiatives as we get into the presentation. Uh, I do want to reiterate, and I think this is really important, and I say this almost every time I speak, uh, we must, 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 must take a holistic approach to solve this problem. Police alone cannot solve this problem. Instead, we start addressing the issues, the root causes, this is causing people to commit crime, we are not gonna solve this problem. We are not. And those issues are education, they are access to education, food, jobs, et cetera. We are feeling the effects of a generation from fifteen or twenty years ago. So if we do not do something now, the cycle is going to continue. Um, mental health is a huge issue, and the city manager mentioned earlier that we're gonna be bringing on our mental health counselors. I'm really excited about that. I, I, I'm hoping that we, instead of just band-aiding situations, we're able to step up now and really start doing casework, similar to what we do with our victim witness coordinator. So instead of just responding to a call for service, uh, and, and, you know, band-aiding the problem, we're able to start a case file with the individual that we're dealing with. Uh, one of the things our pilot program is also doing is gonna divert as many calls for service as possible to a single, uh, clinician response, instead of a co-responder response. So you'll see a lot more on that. Um, all right. I review on the crime across the cities, Ward Six represents the most percentage of crime at fifty-two percent. Um, it's a lot is related to the businesses in Ward Six. Walgreens in particular, um, is one of our, our chronic sites. It's followed by Ward Two at twenty-three percent and Ward Three at sixteen percent. Uh, Ward Five saw the largest overall increase in crime with an increase of eighty-nine percent. Ward Five has traditionally always been one of the lowest crime numbers, Ward Four and Five have. Uh, this is mainly due to an increase of three, uh, three reportable incidents, uh, three reportable assault incidents in twenty twenty-two and fourteen and twenty twenty-three. Theft from autos also went up in Ward Five from six to fifteen. So Ward Five still accounts for the lowest percentage of crime overall in the city. Uh, Ward Three was the only ward in the city, uh, that saw a reduction, nineteen percent reduction in crime in twenty twenty-three. This is mainly due to a forty-five percent decrease in theft from autos, thirty-two percent decrease in burglaries, and a forty percent decrease in assaults. Uh, in response to these crime trends, we've instituted high-profile on-duty and plainclothes details for, and hotspots throughout the city. So we don't just randomly deploy officers. The way we deploy officers is through intelligence. We have a crime analyst, and anyone that's come to one of our ward meetings understands what our heat maps are and understands how we analyze crime. We don't not only do this for crime, we also do this for traffic-related incidents. So where we're placing officers is where incidents are occurring most frequently. So if we know that burglaries are most likely to occur in Ward Four in a specific section between five and six on Thursdays and Fridays, that's where we're placing offers, officers. Uh, several arrests have been made across the city as a result of these details, to include armed robbery, burglary, auto theft, theft from auto, and carjackings. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, our officers and detectives tirelessly investigated crimes committed within the city. Staff have made arrests for several high-profile incidents, uh, and they are listed within the report. The arrests include, and I'll highlight just several of the high, high-profile ones. There was an arrest for an individual involved in several food truck robberies along New Hampshire Avenue. This suspect was also responsible for several food truck robberies throughout our region. Uh, there was another arrest for us, this is a trend, this was last year as well, a suspect responsible for several shed burglaries in the city, a suspect responsible for rape, a suspect responsible for several church burglaries, um, a suspect responsible for several residential burglaries, and suspects involved in carjackings and robberies. And I said, a full listing can be found in the report. I think it's important because a lot of times you'll find that, that single individuals are responsible for multiple incidents within the city. So when we make an arrest, we not only close incidents here in the city, but with, through our partners and other allied agencies, we're able to solve crimes in their other, in other jurisdictions as well, and vice versa sometimes when crimes are solved in other jurisdictions, our detectives speak daily with the other detectives and we're able to, to put together crimes. An example of that was the, the food truck, uh, incidents. So traffic and safety are a priority, um, in our agency. We work with other departments in the city to address traffic issues, uh, and engineering to ensure we have safe streets and sidewalks and have safe pedestrian and bicycles, for safe passage for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles. Uh, we have a traffic unit that addresses problem areas within the city that is supplemented by our patrol staff. We also use automated technology. Um, we currently have a speed camera program. We are hopeful that we will have our red light camera program up, um, starting in April. Uh, so that is just an added tool for us, it's a force multiplier where we're able to use technology, uh, to, uh, to correct, correct behavior. And I said before to this body and to others, uh, the, the, the purpose of automated enforcement is not revenue generation, it's to correct behavior. And if you look at our speed cameras over the years, if you look at the number of citations, they have drastically dropped over the years. So we're hopeful that our red light camera program does the same. Our red light cameras have been placed throughout the city and problem intersections. Uh, the one intersection we would like to get up and running, but we have not yet been approved because of purple line construction is New Hampshire University. It's one of the most problematic intersections in the region. Uh, just looking into the number of vehicle collisions, uh, in the city, uh, they were up slightly. Uh, we had a hundred and ninety-six vehicle collisions in twenty twenty-two, and we had two, uh, two hundred and six in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we did experience one fatal collision in twenty twenty-three. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we had no fatal collisions, um, and we saw, uh, collisions with injuries increased from twenty-six in twenty twenty-two to forty-five in twenty twenty-three, and there was a slight reduction in the incidents with, uh, accidents with, uh, just property damage. Uh, we continue to, as we do with, with, with our, with our criminal enforcement, we continue to address, uh, trends. We continue to look at trends, but we also factor in residents' complaints regarding specific areas. Um, so when we, when we get a complaint about a specific problem area, we deploy officers to assess whether or not it's a problem. If it is a problem, we continue to put it on our hotspot area and officers will continue to check it. So I encourage, um, members of the public, if you do have an area that you think is a problem, report it to us, we can go out and do an assessment, we have a traffic counter where we can go out and do that. Uh, we put the traffic counter on, on Wildwood, um, and it was just amazing the volume of cars that came down Wildwood. I think it was seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand-
Eighteen.
-in a week. So that just gives you an idea of what we can do. I do want to touch quickly on training. Training the personnel is an absolute priority of ours. Uh, it enhances skills and knowledge abilities of staff and identifies gaps in capabilities and procedures. All of our officers, uh, are required to do a minimum eighteen hours per the Maryland Police Training Commission. Uh, we ensure that our officers go above beyond that training. It is really important that we emphasize the importance of training. Um, our officers have gone to de-escalation training, almost all of our officers are, are trained in advanced crisis intervention training. So as much as we'd like to divert as many calls as possible to mental health calls, there's still calls that require police officers. So the more better our officers can be trained, the better our response is gonna be. We've had a lot of success stories where our officers have de-escalated situations because of things that they've learned in this training. Um, one thing I wanted to touch on, um, was, um, our misconduct. So we, we, not only do we encourage staff to report misconduct, we encourage the public to do so as well. We fully investigate all complaints received. Once again, we fully investigate all complaints received. Uh, you can file a complaint in person, you can file a plate, a complaint anonymously online, all of that information is readily available on our website. We want to make it easy and seamless if someone has an issue with our Police Department, to bring it forward to us so we can review it. We also take compliments, so if you have something nice to say about us, you can do it as well. Um, so, just, uh, the department received eleven complaints in twenty twenty-three. Four of the complaints were submitted by community members and seven were submitted internally by employees. So as I said earlier, four were submitted by members of the public. Seven, seven were submitted by internally. So we're policing ourselves, which is important. Uh, and there were two compliments, uh, submitted, um, on, uh, on that, uh, website as well. Uh, all of our officers wear body worn cameras. Uh, body worn cameras are essential in determining if a complaint is unfounded and determine, determine if it supports the allegation. Um, in twenty twenty-three, officers had a total of twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-five contacts with the public. Uh, this included calls for service, self-initiated, uh, calls, and traffic stops. The complaints received represent less than one percent, point zero zero zero, point zero zero zero, eight-seven percent of all contacts made by the officers within this agency. Once again, point zero 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 eight-seven percent of calls for service that we handle resulted in a complaint being filed. Uh, de-escalation training and utilization by officers is critical. Uh, part of use, ensuring that officers use force when only necessary and proportional to each situation is making sure all use of force incidents are investigated. The Tacoma Park Police has stringent reporting guidelines in the use of force incidents. The department policy requires, uh, reporting under various situations, and for the time's sake, I won't go over all of the specific incidents. There were twenty-two incidents in which use of force, use of force or a show of force was used or claimed in twenty twenty-three. Eleven incidents were a show of force where compliance was gained. This may be, um, taken out of taser, this may taken out of weapon, where force, where force wasn't used, but it, a show of force was used and gained compliance. All of the twenty-two use of force incidents were investigated and found to be justified in accordance to department policy. Uh, once again, in twenty twenty-three, uh, Tacoma Park Police Officers had twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-five contacts, and the use of force incidents involved in those incidents was point zero zero one seven percent of all calls for service resulted in a show of force or use of force. It's extremely number of, of use of force incidents, uh, really reinforces the success of de-escalation and crisis intervention by our officers. Uh, all of our officers attend the annual de-escalation training, and many have been trained in the advanced, in the crisis intervention that I mentioned. Our officers have been able to utilize this in multiple different arenas. Hiring staff i- is critical to this profession, and as I said earlier, about seventy-five percent of our Police Department has been hired. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we hired two new sworn police officers and one civilian employee. Currently staffing-wise, we are staffed with thirty-nine of our forty-three positions are filled. That's still good comparatively to other agencies. But we are concerned that, about our competitiveness for new hires. A lot of agencies now are offering, uh, signing bonuses and all kinds of other incentives, so we, we may need to at some point evaluate whether or not that is something that we need to do here, um, in the city. Um, as I said earlier, our department is diverse, we're almost a direct reflection of the demographics of the city of Tacoma Park. We speak six different, six different languages, with several of our officers, including Officer Ayala, fluent in Spanish. Uh, community engagement is extremely important, we participated in numerous community outreach events, many of which are listed, and for the sake of time, I won't go into them, uh, but that is really important. Uh, one of the ones that I, I was really, really happy to attend, uh, was the Santa event, uh, at Chuck E. Cheese. That has traditionally been a very underserved community, um, we haven't had a lot of events there, we had a coffee with a cop at the Starbucks, but it was amazing the number of kids that were there. But it was amazing the number of kids that were there and were comfortable with coming forward, not only to Santa, but with our officers that had Santa hats on. It was a tremendous event. There were hundreds of kids there, hundreds of kids there. So we're looking forward to that event as well. I always say you want the first interaction that a child has with a police officer to be a positive one, not a negative one, because it's a these a lasting impression. If you have a negative impression on your first interaction, that can stay with you for a lifetime. I mentioned earlier communicating with our residents, business owners, stakeholders is critical for relationship building. We've held numerous community meetings, as I mentioned. We also put out daily and weekly crime reports, thanks to Councilmember Gibson, who suggested the weekly, the weekly submission as well. And all of that is on our website, so you can go and visit and go back and look. And it's ward-specific as well. So if you're concerned about, well, what happened in my ward? You can go to our website and look from February of 26. Somebody said, well, did you hear about that robbery that occurred in my neighborhood? Well, no, I didn't. Well, you know, on the website, you can get information on that. I want to end where I started and thank the men and women of the Tacoma Park Police Department, their dedication, bravery, and service to our community. Keep Tacoma Park a safe, accepting, caring, and multicultural community that we all love. With that, I will open it up to questions from councilmembers.
And the lights, Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to note, point of order that I had ordinarily, I would defer to Terry in in this circumstance. But I I want to make sure that I got a chance to talk about this in case I do bone out from length of time and pain. The the best thing about knowing what you do in the police department is knowing what we used to do in the police department. The second best thing is that when I was on the block in a different place and I had a really, really good police chief, who didn't like many other police chiefs, he told me that he was really excited that you were about to take this job. And so I wanted to say that again, because as I have watched these things, I've not watched without some degree of expertise. And it's really been a pleasure to extol your virtues, because it's easy to do. I tell people a lot that truth is easy if it's if it's good, and it sucks if it's bad. But there's a couple of things that I did want to bring up for the benefit of the department and or the officers. And they're both kind of related, and it has to do with fentanyl and the deterrent effect of having a really positive police department. I am the ex-official member of the Crossroads Development Authority. Mayor was that before me. And so you go to those meetings, and at those board meetings, since we do have a staffer that does that, there is a pretty consistent drumbeat among the other business owners in the area that there are additional negative effects associated with the constant interposition of fentanyl into that immediate area. I know that also because the residents who are along that corridor, we've discussed this before, you've discussed it with some of them as well, whether it be Ann Street or any of the other ingress egress streets, have all noted pretty significant changes in the dynamic and character of interactions in the neighborhood. That also comes from economic stress. Poor people, you know, like anybody who's at the point of being like, well, you know, screw it, is going to do whatever they're going to do because there's no value to things. So during those meetings, one of the things that came up was that the there is an opinion, and I don't know whether or not it's accurate, so that's why I'm saying it in this way, that there has been a somewhat drop off of people who have been willing to take the extra shifts for deterrent-type policing when they're not at work. And I would like just like to encourage those officers who aren't doing that to consider doing it more, because number one, it is put a burden on the officers who do it consistently. Those officers tend to be brown. And then it also kind of puts a burden on the business owners and the people in the area, because they don't like having to deal with the fact that we are the ugly and dark, unremitting, evil place within the city. And particularly since we bring in all the money. And so I would like to encourage people to consider some of those, like how we get to those things. And it's also part of the reason why I'm really adamant about trying to stick it to the guns of both this council and the state actors about what we're going to do, about your profound and impassioned plea at the local meeting about how we deal with police interactions and youth. I think the last thing I would bring up again is I've been often placed with the burden of by residents and other people of being like, hey, Jason, fentanyl, or hey, Jason, and so I bring those things up. I've also brought up the lack of jurisdictional support, and I've tried to bring that up, because I 100% know that even if I was accurate about that, you weren't going to say that, because you're a good cop. And so when things happen down the road at the corner of East West Highway and New Hampshire Avenue, and then people go apoplectic when we've been talking about these issues and there's really been no way to address them from whatever reason, state actors or lack of political will. It's one of those things that makes me feel alienated as the Ward Six councilperson. The persistence of the problems and my desire to ameliorate them effectively, very speedily, seems to have also been sort of an issue for any number of people. But I wanted to thank you for knowing that I be putting the screws to people and and standing up to some withering assaults and reflecting the mission of a department in the way that you do things. So if any of the other officers are watching, please consider taking those extra off-hour shifts. And the last thing I would say to you is is that, as unfortunate as it may be and unpleasant as it may be for this council or anybody else, we're going to look at our pension plan so that we don't have to take years away from people when they transfer, because that may be an incentive that could potentially help you.
You're so ready for people when they transfer? Thank you, Councilmember Small.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for coming tonight and giving a decent report. It's always good to hear that although things are bad, that that you guys are on top of things. And thank you also to the officers and your staff members for all the work that they put in and the danger they put themselves in to serve the community. I really appreciate that. I have a list of short, a short list of questions here, not as short as you'd like, but start off with the staffing. You say you're down four officers now. That's unfortunate, and we'd like to stay full staffed. Is there anything that this council can do to help you through this time?
Good question.
I know that this is a something that's nationwide problem, but you have in the past always shown that you're more creative than some of the other police chiefs and able to find people.
I I will, I appreciate the question. And as I said previously, with hiring, it's quality, not quantity. And I'd rather work with 25 good officers than 25 good ones and 18 that are not. So last year, we lost one to a retirement, Captain Sipperly. We lost one that left the profession. We lost one that that moved quite a ways away. He lived in Hagerstown, and the commute was hard. So we're hopeful that we're we're keeping people wanting to stay here. But how can the council keep that, keep people wanting to stay here? It is supporting the police officers we have and recognizing the officers. I know we do that frequently. But that's also through, you know, we're going to be bringing most likely the Local 400 Collective Bargaining Agreement to you all, supporting things like that. But I think, I'll be candid, and I think a lot of officers feel like there's not support. They're supporting good times, but there may not be support in bad times. I mean, there may be some situations that our officers are involved in that that need to be looked into, and they may or may not be the best-case scenario. But giving officers the benefit of the doubt why we are able to investigate, I think, is important. As I mentioned earlier, we're considering hiring bonuses, because as much as it's 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 great that we're keeping people here, because traditionally, we used to hemorrhage people. We had have multiple people leave every year. That's why we never kept fully staffed. So I think that that what we need to worry about is is keeping the people that are here, here, and incentivizing them to stay here. And that's giving them good equipment, that's giving them good training, that's giving them a police department that they want to come to. People have come to this police department because of what this police department represents. That's not going to change. That is going to remain. But getting them equipment, whether it be electric bikes, whether it be different tools that they need, you know, we haven't gotten our our vehicles are backlog. So making sure that they have the equipment to do their job is really important. You know, I know that the council just approved a budget amendment to increase the overtime. I think that's really important. But I will say that, you know, and it Councilmember Small mentioned the Tacoma Langley Crossroads overtime detail. At some point, our officers are getting tired, and at some point, you know, we need staffing. So what you can do to support us is, I think, as we bring forward initiatives to create incentives, we're asking for you to support those, whether it be a, you know, hiring bonus, some type of incentive, whether it be a retention bonus maybe. But just in general, supporting officers by just general support, acknowledgement, I think is really important. As much as these officers say that they don't like to be acknowledged, they like to be acknowledged. Our officers are doing phenomenal things. City Manager Jespito mentioned, you know, our detective Detective Janelle Lane is is coaching a seventh-grade basketball team. She doesn't get a lot of kudos for that, but you know, that's 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 giving back positively. So, you know, as we continue.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, and again, trying to keep my shortlist short enough.
Oh, I'm making my my answer long, which is making your shortlist harder, so go ahead.
But but I appreciate your perspective. I'll tell you, my personal opinion is that money isn't always a solution to finding and retaining officers. I think it's important, those things are important. But I think some of the the other things, like where you look for them, for the type of people that you're looking for, and and how the the city treats, and that includes the council, treats the officers, I agree, is is also important. You mentioned, and just a couple of things that you mentioned, I'd like to ask you. You mentioned the speed cameras and how that the citations have decreased through the years. I wondered if the accidents have decreased, because the reason we chose locations for the speed cameras was allegedly because they were high accident areas. And has has that also decreased, or have you looked at that?
If we do an analysis long-term, even though we had an increase this year of 10 vehicle collisions, we still have relatively low numbers of vehicle collisions. And they all are pretty, pretty predominantly, if you look at the heat maps along New Hampshire Avenue and East West Highway, yeah, that's where they occur, the majority. I mean, you may find an offset. So but if you look at the numbers over the years, traffic collisions have been reduced. So periodically, we take and look at and analyze particular intersections to see over time. We can do that, we're doing a couple of analysis points. So we'd probably do to to it's probably time to do that anyway, because honestly, if we're having the number of reductions and we have intersections that are just not having frequent violations, it may be time to remove those cameras. If if you're only getting four citations a day or violations a day, then, you know, the 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 equipment has done its job.
Or leave the equipment there, but don't have it running.
Yeah, there's there's one on Piney Branch Road close to your house that
That's right.
the county owns, it's not working, but it's slowing people down for sure.
So was the same philosophy used in placing red light cameras? That you put them in intersections where there are accidents?
Absolutely. So what what we did when we brought when we brought our contractor in, they analyzed all of our crash data and and chose intersections where we had frequent crashes. New Hampshire and University, Piney Branch and Philadelphia, various intersections along New Hampshire Avenue. But we also, they put out test units that would monitor the number of violations that occurred on a daily basis. So it's twofold. It is find the intersections that have the most frequent violations. Because I can tell you right now, red light camera running and red light collisions are much more damaging than speed. It just is. I mean, it, yeah, I can't tell you how horrific scenes I've seen from red light, you know, red light running. So two things, like I said, the analyzation of of crash data and the number of of citation, or number of violations that occur daily. The intersection, the two parts of the intersection we have in New Hampshire and University, those two sections outnumbered, the number of violations per day outnumbered every other site we have in the city.
I know there've been some horrific accidents at Philadelphia Avenue and Piney Branch Road. And then tasers, you know, years ago when we got tasers, you know, the council requested that they be advised anytime tasers were deployed. And haven't heard anything since you came here, I don't think.
I think we we broached this issue like a year ago when we sent you information. That wasn't really codified anywhere, but I think, as I told you, we're more than happy to continue to start reporting that. That was kind of a, nothing that was memorialized in writing that we would do that.
Exactly.
So but I think we, I think it was last year we had an incident, and I think I sent it up to the council, and I think it was you that said, well, this is the first one I've seen in forever. So we're committed to just at least advising of the nature. We had a deployment of a taser, and that more than happy to do that.
Yeah, I think it's important for the council to be aware, because it is often a concern from residents, the use of tasers, because they are shocking. Never mind. The the last question was, you had mentioned about, you know, the need to deal with kind of the core issues of why people become robbers or thieves, whatever. And and yet, what percentage of the perpetrators that we catch are residents of Tacoma Park?
And and this came up during the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. The large majority of people that we arrest don't live in the city. But that doesn't mean that we don't need to do our part in the city to make sure that our residents have all of the tools that we talked about earlier, because our residents are committing crimes elsewhere. Just because they're not committing crimes here doesn't mean they're not committing crimes in downtown Silver Spring. So I think, in my opinion, and based off some of the recommendations of Reimagining Public Safety Task Force, is we need to do our own part here for our residents. And if every jurisdiction owns their own residents, then we'll solve the problem. So we can only control what we can control. And what we can control is our youth, making sure that they have summer jobs, making sure that they have access to after-school programs, making sure that they are eating, making sure all of these things. So so I, it is, what can we do? We can control our our own residents, the 18,000 and some residents that live here. But I wish that more people, more jurisdictions understood the importance of this, because once again, if we just do it in Tacoma Park here, and 75% of the people that we arrest don't live here, we're not going to solve our problem. But we may solve a robbery from occurring in downtown Silver Spring, or homicide, or some other serious incident by by correcting the behavior or saving one person. So it's one person at a time.
And also save some in Tacoma Park, too. I'm sure there's
Correct.
some people, some people.
Yeah, we do, don't get me wrong, we do have Tacoma Park residents committing crimes. Don't don't get me wrong.
Chief Point of Order, Mayor, I apologize. But due to, I had food poisoning the day, two days after my birthday, and so I puked for like three days. And one of the things that happens when that happens is that all of the things that are loose, re-loosened in different ways. And so like, that's why this has been a particularly difficult day. And so rather than like, deal with the chemicals and the pain and then get up in a huff because something ridiculous is happening, I'm just going to tell you guys I'm about to dip. So, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens, I just want to check to see if you are done with your comments. Councilmember Fulcher.
Did anybody else want to turn answering questions? I feel bad that the three of you are sitting back there.
You don't feel bad.
Are you sure? I mean, like, mine are easy.
Let's see what they are.
Yeah. So I know that recently, it's Captain Sipperly, right? We had a clapping out for him.
Clapping in, but
Clapping in, okay.
A little bit.
Yeah, so is the plan for replacing someone like him? Are you planning on moving people up in the ranks? Like, how, what is your hiring like? Okay, so so
Already done.
Generally, you're trying to move people up through the ranks. Are you are you generally hiring, you know, newbies? Or are you, like, where where do you look to hire in your Or are you, like, where where do you look to hire in your?
So that's a good question. So traditionally, for new hire officers, or for officers at the officer level, uh, we do a mixture of new hires. New hires would be people that have never been police officers previously. They are required to go through a police academy. But we also hire lateral officers that come from other agencies and come to our agency. We offer an incentive in years of service when they come here. So we offer them pay up to ten years, uh, to incentivize them from coming here. But there are two positions within the police department that are, well, three positions. My my position, the deputy chief and the captain, that are appointed positions. So at times, we will go outside and we will hire people from outside. So when we needed to fill a deputy chief and a captain position, we went outside and we we selected Deputy Chief Filippous and Captain Evans. But it's also important to, for 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 people within the agency for upward mobility. So when we had this captain's position, we interviewed all of our eligible lieutenants, and we got a great selection in in Captain Holmes. So those three positions are the only ones that that that, of supervisory positions, where we would go outside the police department potentially. But we we've done it, we've done it both ways. Mostly, I've done it internally.
And then, uh, I think that we have an emergency preparedness manager getting ready to retire. Are you planning on uh replacing that position? And, you know, is that something that you're working on before the retirement or after the retirement?
It we, it is our goal. So so we've already sent it to our to our HR department to advertise. It is a union position, so it must be advertised internally first. So that's what we're hoping to do this week or or very soon. The goal is to have, bring someone on board before Ron Hardy leaves. So there's an overlap. So we would have the ability for Ron to be able to train the new emergency preparedness manager. Uh, that person doesn't just work within the police department. As you know, uh, they work with a lot of other departments within the city. It's a very critical role. Uh, Ron, I think, has been here for twelve years. Ron is a phenomenal guy, but he he he's, you know, his late sixties. He deserves to enjoy his kids and his grandkids, so kudos then. This is his, I'm looking at someone else that might want to do that, but not too soon. So it, yeah, it it's, we're we're definitely looking to replace it. Anytime we have a vacancy, uh, the goal is is always to fill it. Right now, we have the the four police officer vacancies. Uh, we have a couple crossing guard positions that were were, we interviewed today for the crossing guards. Uh, we have one dispatcher vacancy, and I think that is it. That could have been an opportunity for one of them to come up, but I think that's it.
Okay, uh, two more, wait, uh, yeah, two more questions. So I know that unfortunately, uh, we didn't get enough interest in the community police academy this spring. Is that something that you only hold in spring because that's best for the police sort of schedule? Okay.
Yeah, and what we, uh, what we've, uh, what we want to do, that's that's a big commitment. That's a twelve week commitment. So it's a big commitment.
Oh, I know.
And and you went through, and a lot of our residents have gone through. You gotta understand, we've been doing this for for, I think, over fifteen years. So this was done before I got here. This is a great thing that was, I I don't take credit for this. But I think we've exhausted the number of people that 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 are interested. So what we're looking at doing is having either a condensed, um, just Spanish speaking academy that may be four to five weeks, or a youth academy that would also be condensed and be four to five weeks. So that's what we're looking at doing, because I think we can attract um a broader base of people interested in 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 coming to and learning about the police department. Because the goal is to bring people in that 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 hopefully are are mistrusting of the police department. Because a lot of people that come there aren't super fans of the police department. But we want them to come there and get a better understanding of what our police department is about. Uh, you've gone through the academy, so you know kind of from A to Z what it is. Kathy and Ron do a fantastic job. But just to go back to your main question, it it's mainly done in the spring just because we have so many staff that are involved, and it's really hard to do with with leave in the summer and so on and so forth. But like I say, we're looking for alternative ways that we can hold a class that still educates the public, but and we can attract people, and it's not as much of a commitment. Because that's a pretty big commitment, twelve weeks.
Okay, um, and so my last question, so the car meetup situation, uh, that it's a problem. I'm just wondering, uh, you know, how, you know, what are sort of the plans on dealing with that? How do we support you? How does the state support you? Are the laws set up in a way where you find that they are sufficient in dealing with what you're seeing?
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna, since Deputy Chief Filippous handled this, and you want to hear from one of my eloquent, another eloquent speaker from the police department, I'll have him come up.
Come on down.
Wait, what was the question?
Oh, the car meetup, okay, thank you.
Sure. Ju- just to give you an update on on that, our investigators are still working on the case. The laws aren't sufficient for us to be able to prosecute uh these people for these violations. These are misdemeanor violations currently. There's nothing that we can, um, we as a police department can do uh post the incident, you know? And during the incident, these are traffic violations. And if an officer, you you know, take away the crowds and all these other people, but if the officer tries to make a traffic stop, these individuals aren't aren't going to stop. And we will not pursue for misdemeanor traffic violations. So there's a a a litany of things that we're working against. And even in this particular incident, our detectives identified one of the cars. We know where the car is at, but there's not much we can do other than follow these cars. Now broadly speaking, we are um working with the state police, we are working with other jurisdictions, and there is a uh intelligence gathering that goes on. And what the state police and what the jurisdictions, multi jurisdictions try to do is get ahead of a number of these incidents. So, you know, collect the information, and it it costs a lot of money, too. Because once we find out where the next meetup is, luckily, it doesn't happen in Tacoma Park. This is the first one we have had. But these other jurisdictions where it does happen more frequently, they have to bring in a plethora of officers. Um, and usually, these officers are on overtime, um, to bring them in prior to the meetups, to flood the area with police, so these meetups don't occur. And it's, uh, and if you look at some of the videos, and any of these videos, it's, these individuals aren't just car enthusiasts. There there's drugs involved, there's weapons involved. Especially in the one in Tacoma Park, there was an individual that brandished a handgun, several of the individuals wearing body armor. So, uh, I don't know if I answered all your questions. Did you have anything else?
No, I think you're good.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
And and I'm done.
Yeah, one thing that I do just want to add, um, and thank you so much, Deputy Chief. You know, um, we submitted testimony. There were bills in Annapolis this session, um, that were really trying to strengthen the state laws around prosecution of these kinds of of things. So, um, for residents that are out there and for colleagues, you know, this is one of the main reasons why we're constantly trying to keep our finger on the pulse during the legislative session around which bills are coming forward and where we can weigh in in order to try to strengthen some of these laws that are outside of our jurisdiction but impact us every day. And Councilmember Dibala, I think you're next.
Yeah, I think most of my questions have already been asked. So first, I just want to thank you and the team for the changes over the last six years. It's just wonderful to see, um, the the kind of policing that we have here and the changes over the last six years. I I was going to ask about state legislation, because it also came up earlier tonight with respect to um you, the the you, the juvenile crime bills. Is there any update or anything that you want to say about any of the state legislation going on right now?
You know, I I think we we all have been very clear on the issues with uh the change in legislation a few years ago. The challenges that we as a police department have encountered. So I think most of the bills that we support are still active. So we're hopeful that some of those allow us to have some of the tools, um, you know, to to when juveniles are involved in criminal activity to investigate it. And 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 understand, we are, we have always been very respectful of juveniles' rights. And I think, you know, some of these, some of these laws weren't acted because of some of the horror stories out of other jurisdictions that were where isolated incidents weren't the norm, especially here. But we need the ability, just, you know, I, as I said before, I mean, we had the the individual, the young child, the twelve year old that was involved in a bomb threat on Montgomery County Public Schools, when he was caught, said, I knew you couldn't do anything, I'm twelve years old, what can you do to me? So it, we we need to, we need to come up with a better system. But I think, I think from a support end, I think, as the mayor touched on earlier, I think all of the bills that we supported, um, I think that the city council weighed in as well. So I feel pretty positive about, at least our voice was heard in in that respect.
Thank you. And then, we're two questions, we'll, we'll talk about that.
I was gonna say, you have you have us next week for two hours.
Yes, and so there's no point doing that right now. But what, if there are any other, any residents listening, um, we are collecting questions in advance so that the staff can be prepared with with data and so forth to answer them. Thank you.
And and just this is some, just to re- uh, restate, so so the the meeting will be held, it's going to be recorded. People can come live, people can attend via Zoom, they can submit questions in advance. We're also going to post the video on our website. But more importantly, if you watch that and you have any questions that 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 weren't answered or you just had some follow up questions, you also can 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 send us those questions, and we'll respond to them and put them out publicly as well.
Councilmember Hanzak.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Maybe I'll start with uh the follow up to the question that Shayna was asking. So might, we might have to switch who's talking. I was concerned in the incident that just happened, um, where you talked about uh some some of the people wearing body armor. It sounded, from the description, like a very overwhelming situation for our officers. And I was concerned about the mental health of our officers, particularly after we, you know, in my limited experience of policing, you know, we watched the mental health of our, some of our national uh police force and and what that's done to some of our officers. What kinds of supports does your staff have in place for that? Particularly given that this was an unusual situation. Are you adequately supported, and is there anything that we can do in that regard?
That's a really, really good question, because mental health of our officers is 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 of the utmost priority. Our officers see things that no one else sees. In my thirty-two years of policing, I still can vividly remember multiple scenes, right now as I stand here. Vividly remember them. So the impact on officers is is can be immense. So what we try to do is, anytime an officer is involved in a significant incident, we obviously debrief with them. We have a not only peer counseling that's 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 available, but we also have emergency assistance. So we really, really monitor, um, you know, officers that are in distress. It used to be, there used to be a stigma about not feeling well, like it was something you had to be hard. So if you just saw a baby that was severely injured in an accident, you're supposed to just, you know, not react to it. Because if you did, you were soft. We've taken away that stigma, because, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our officers have children, a lot of our officers have responded to the the, we've had two children fall from from buildings, one of them passed away. That's a significant uh incident, and it it was the same squad that handled both incidents. The first one, you know, the the young man uh survived, and and our officers made a connection with him, and I think that was therapeutic for them. You know, our officers were able to go back and attend his birthday party and so on and so forth. But I think that that we really need to recognize that that mental health in this profession is uh something that we cannot ignore. All of our officers go through annual mental health screening now. That was a a mandate by the new state law, as well as myself. I had to do the same mental health screening for anyone that's a sworn officer. So I I think it's something that that we recognize. So when you used to be involved in a significant incident, you know, you just go back and you, you know, you you go to the bar or something with your buddies, or you go talk, but you would, nobody would would talk to you and see if you were okay. So that's what we do now. Our commanders are very vigilant in in asking people, are they okay? And a lot of times, people will say, no, I'm not. And just talking through it and understanding, okay, well, what was the impact? You know, I mean, so I think that's critically important. A lot of people take advantage of our of our peer support. Sometimes it's not as comfortable to talk to a clinician, it might be more comfortable to talk to a a peer. Uh, so we have that available as well. You know, we've had some, you know, some significant incidents that have been, you know, pretty traumatizing. You know, we lost an officer when I first got here, Matt Barber passed away of a heart attack, and that was just, it was really hard on our staff. But I think, um, the ability for us to pull together as a team was really important. So I think, yeah, I mean, I think, what can you do? I I think that just continuing, I think it goes back to the same theme, is supporting our officers, letting them know that they're valued. When they're involved in significant incidents, don't abandon them. Because sometimes, we haven't had an incident here, but we may have an incident that 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 on face value, the public might not think is, you know, great. But we have to give the officer their their, you know, their rights and 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 review the incident and all the facts and circumstances and so on and so forth. So not abandoning that individual during that time is important. And I think some, sometimes officers feel like, okay, like I said, during the good times, I'm going to have the support. But Lord forbid something happened that is not, may not be the best or look the best way. So I, you know, for me, it's 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 also for me at the top acknowledging to my staff that, you know, I'm human, stuff affects me. That, you know, I I told my staff during the pandemic, I said, it affected my mental health. I said, as long, if I can acknowledge it, that I, during my career, I've had incidents where, yeah, it's affected me severely. I've seen some things, you know, when my older kids were were, you know, three and four, I had to go to a scene where there was an entire family that was killed by their father on Thanksgiving Day. You never, you never ever ever erase that from your psyche. But understanding how to process that is really important.
So so on that note, do you specifically, do you feel that your officers were given adequate support, given the unusual circumstances that just occurred in in sort of a large gathering where you had to call upon extra police forces? Is, in that case, is there anything different we could do in a future scenario? And that we need to know about as a council, especially to ensure that everything's in place for you to get support should this happen again?
I I will say, as as significant as that sounds to the council.
It what?
Uh, our our officers encounter armed perpetrators that.
Okay.
With knives and guns and 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 that want to fight the police. And and so, yes, that, they they handled that situation fantastically. They could have tried to escalate and try to, you know, go into the crowd, and that would have just caused an immense issue. So that incident in and of itself is more of, I I don't think the public really understands the violence that our officers encounter. I mean, we we in, we we encounter people that are extremely violent, and a lot of them with mental health issues that violently resist and fight the police. We also see things that are just immoralizing, like I said earlier. So while that incident was significant, I don't think that incident was on the chart.
All right, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure, particularly when I heard that the the, there was a feeling that policies might not be in place for officers to be able to perpetrate the crimes. But I think we're doing what's in our power from what I'm hearing from you, um, at this point. So so then my only other question is related to, in Ward Five, um, you, uh, it is my impression still, and we're investigating this sort of together with some community meetings, I know we have some plans to do that. But, um, we have a, I think we have a a lower than reality reporting rate. And I know that your staff is very much data driven at this point. And some of that is because we have a lot of non-English speakers, a a large concentration and a large number in my particular ward. So I'm not totally convinced that the data is reflective of the reality for a whole number of reasons. And we're also in a jurisdictional border area all the way around, and so there's a lot of crossover crime and crime that everybody else is noticing, but like, it might not get directly reported to you, or at least not immediately. Whereas the residents are like, how does it, how could anybody say that there's not so much crime uh happened right there across the street? So what, you 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 were talking about traffic calming, and you said you sometimes come out, I think you were, you you sometimes come out based on resident complaints. Is that a practice at all, or is there any other practice that you use to address the kinds of things I'm talking about when there isn't so much data, such as in Award Five, that you could describe to us a little bit?
As I described how we deploy resources for traffic incidents, we also do the same thing for crime incidents or quality of life incidents. So if we know that a particular area is having problems through the crime analysis, we will deploy officers. But also, if we're getting calls from residents that say, we just got a report of of incidents with with vagrants on Ann Street, but we, our calls for service don't reflect that. We are going to take the resident input the same way we do with traffic with criminal offenses. So what we would do, if if we had residents that said, you know, we're having chronic drinking and 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 so on and so forth, and disorderly conduct at Hudson and Flower on these times, we would deploy officers to assess, is it actually happening? And if it was, we would address the problems, and then it would become a directed patrol. So it's the same way. So we don't solely deploy resources based off of of the data, we also deploy resources based off of residence complaints.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And if I can just touch on one thing, I'm very hopeful that if we can have a Spanish speaking academy, we can get to some of the residents that under-report crime. And I do think a lot of it is language barriers, and we do have a a, almost a Spanish speaker on every one of our shifts. So it's not like you can't get someone if you call, but I think there's just a a stigma about calling. So it's not like you can't get someone if you call, but I think there's just a, a stigma about calling the police, and it's cultural. So the more we can connect with, with, with that segment of our community, the better.
Great, and just so everybody knows, we, we are working on some really exciting plans. We just firmed up one date, we've got a breakfast scheduled with a bunch of, um, one hundred percent Spanish-speaking parents at Silver Spring International Middle School, um, which I am delighted that you have agreed to, um, deploy your officers to do that. And we're working on another one, potentially, in the northern part of our ward, so, thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna ask you, well, I am gonna ask you a couple of questions, but I'm hoping it won't be very long. Um, no, I don't see his, I don't see your light, so I'm, 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 I'm moving.
I can wait.
Um, but the, um, couple, couple of things. One, thank you so much, and, um, I don't wanna reiterate the fact that there are a lot of regional and, and other forces at play in terms of crime, in terms of dealing with youth. Um, it seems like most meetings that I'm a part of with mayors from other jurisdictions, like Rockville and Gaithersburg, the youth is, it's a, it's a big focus for folks. And so, um, I appreciate the fact that, that you and your officers are trying to identify, um, fun ways of engagement as a way to really try to help build those relationships with youth. Um, and also, all of the work, I wanna commend you all for the work that you're doing in connecting with our school principals. I know Councilmember Fulter and I were able to participate in a meeting. Um, because I, I, I believe very firmly, um, about that village mentality when it comes to dealing with youth. And we can't single-handedly just think of youth from the perspective of crime. We have to think about it from the perspective of what is the capacity we have with our rec center, what are we doing there? What is the issues that our, our schools are experiencing, and how could we address things there? And how could we have these positive relationships with our officers as a way to build that village around our youth? And so I, I do think that that's really important. And then lastly, I'm super excited about the mental health counselors, I'm very, very, very excited. And one of the things that I'm, I was wondering about, um, in terms of data, is as we have the mental health counselors come on board, as we start to see more dispatching things happening in terms of like nine-eight-eight calls and responses there, would it be a little easier for us to be able to more definitively quantify those calls that require that mental health intervention, so that we're in a better place to really understand, to your point, some of those root issues at play? Um, because when you see substance use going up, you see mental health issues going up, you're gonna see crime, right? And so how can we make sure that, you know, as part of this pilot, we're not only, um, providing the service, but also being able to really try to quantify the need, and if there's a greater need, and how we may be able to position ourselves to get more and do more?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I, I, obviously, the purpose of the pilot is to ascertain exactly what you're saying. Um, you know, we were originally supposed to be that, that pilot program for the county. Um, but because of the delay of our program, we weren't. But the county, uh, developed a pilot program in another section of the county, and I was really shocked by the number of calls that they could divert to clinician-only. Um, it, it was much more than I anticipated. But it's gonna be critical for us to gather that data and understand, because this is a work in progress. Um, and it also is gonna involve the dispatching and, and, and triaging of the calls. So, um, absolutely, I think at, at the end of this, I, I imagine, uh, you know, Deputy City Manager, uh, uh, Bulldog is very involved in, in, in this, uh, situation. And I think we're gonna have a very comprehensive report that, that looks at all the benchmarks that we're gonna put forward. And I think it will at least allow the council to say, um, "Okay, this is a problem here in Tacoma Park." Um, I, I wanna reiterate, though, that, that, that these mental health counselors, our hope is that they are transferred, the cost of them are transferred to the county Health and Human Services, not, uh, not stay in the city's, uh, the city's responsibility. We, we did this pilot on ARPA. Um, it's my opinion that a, a city of our size should be leaning on, um, a larger jurisdiction for this. But what I think we've done is by having them here, we're gonna give them office space. We're gonna give them all the tools they need, they're gonna be familiar with our residents. So we're getting a head start on having them here, and I think that's gonna be critical. And I think it's, it probably would be good, once we, we get, you know, six months in, eight months in, to come to the council and give an update. Because the county's also doing other, larger-scale mental health things. I think it's important for our residents and the council to know as well.
Yeah, I totally agree. All right, well, it is eleven-twenty, but, um, I just wanna triple-check with the city managers, just to make sure, 'cause your light went on, then it went off, and then.
It was just a quick follow-up question, Chief, to another good point that had been made. Uh, you said correctly that, uh, you know, a lot of the, uh, folks that come, a lot of the crime that occurs in, in Tacoma is, uh, from folks outside. And, you know, we also talked about some areas, like the crossroads, where, you know, we're literally up against other jurisdictions. I just, uh, thought the public and the mayor council might be interested in your perspective on, uh, the, I guess, status of, you know, for lack of a better term, mutual aid or, or responsiveness from agencies that, uh, border us. Uh, the county, counties, uh, you know, and, uh, any other jurisdiction, any, any other policing agencies that might, um, you know, possibly come into play. And, you know, what, sort of what's the, the state of, of, of those relationships? You know, can they be improved, and if so, how?
That's a really good question, and I think members of the council that have been on for a while um, understand our desire to have an MOU with the District of Columbia. Uh, for the residents, for the council, we do have a memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County Police for sharing resources and responsibilities. We also have an MOU with the park police here, that they share, they have multiple different parks here in the city. We do not have an MOU with the Prince George's County Police, and we do not have an MOU with the District of Columbia. Uh, we tried and tried, I tried with, uh, former, uh, Ward Three Councilmember Casey Kostick, uh, to get, um, the District of Columbia to sign a memorandum of understanding with us that would allow us, uh, to, uh, to have mutual jurisdiction if we were crossing borders and so on and so forth. Uh, we, this was back in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we thought we had gotten to the point where that was gonna happen. Um, and then it was nixed, I think, at the, the chief level or higher, maybe, in the mayor level. Um, just for background, the District of Columbia has no memorandum of understanding with any other adjoining jurisdiction outside of the District of Columbia, now they do with, with jurisdictions inside the District of Columbia. So, I will say this, I think our relationship with our, uh, bordering partners, and I'll speak to them, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, District of Columbia, our relationships are good, especially in the investigatory side. We work very closely with their detectives, as I said earlier. We solved the, the, the food truck, uh, robberies, and we also solved a bunch of cases in Montgomery County, because we work collectively together. Um, there is, uh, you know, there's a different call-for-service volume, um, especially in the jurisdictions that abut Tacoma Park. The area of Prince George's County and Langley Park is a very, very, very high-call-volume area, same with the District of Columbia. Uh, so sometimes it's, there's a delay, um, which is, you know, especially in, in, you know, the, the wards that, that are adjacent to the District of Columbia. Um, we had a lot of crimes over on Fourth Avenue where the perpetrators would run over to District of Columbia, and we'd not have a memorandum of understanding. But on the, on the officer level, the beat officer level, and on the commander level, we have good relationships. How could they be improved? They could be improved by memorands of understanding that give us more authority. Now, in Maryland, as Maryland police officers, we have authority, we can chase someone into Prince George's and to Montgomery County. We don't have that into the District of Columbia. If we, it's not a plainview arrest for a serious offense, we, we can't chase anyone into DC. So I think, um, we, I, I, I wish I could say I had confidence, uh, that we could go back and get a memorandum of understanding with the District of Columbia, but I think we, we did everything politically, we did everything from a law enforcement perspective. So here we are, Tacoma Park, and Prince George's County doesn't have an MOU, Montgomery County doesn't have one. Their perspective is, why are you gonna have one with Tacoma Park? So I think it's gonna take, and I, and, and I think Councilmember Gibson, we may have talked about this, I think it's gonna take collectively, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and the municipalities that are adjacent to the District of Columbia, all saying, "We need an MOU," especially with skyrocketing crime in the District of Columbia. Um, so, um, that's a good question, I, I think that, uh, partnerships are really, really important. The same people that are, are committing thefts at the Walgreens are committing thefts across the street. So, but, but I, I, kudos to staff and their, their partnerships, but it could be improved by, by MOUs.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. All right, so we're gonna move on, thank you, Chief, thank you, Officer just ticking it out. Um, and we are going to move on to our, um, final item. We have one more, but I think it's gonna be a short one. Um, the last is the council budget working group update.
I'm just realizing, we didn't talk about who was gonna talk right now.
Oh.
So.
It's pink.
Okay, Councilmember Fulter, you have been voluntold.
Yeah, uh, I mean, it's a memorandum that we wrote, and I'm not really one for reading people a memorandum.
Nope, you don't have to, just give us a general overview of what it is.
Yeah, and so, uh, you know, over the last many months, uh, we've had a lot of in-person meetings. Um, people have done a lot of research, uh, had a lot of meetings with staff, uh, you know, really, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Bulldog would probably tell you, he's had two meeting, meetings with us. Um, and, you know, I, I think the overall, general feeling is, is unfortunately, there's not a real obvious place, uh, where we're, uh, missing out on an opportunity to, uh, save money or to, uh, make more money from the different, uh, things that we looked into. Um, there's a lot of places where we still think more research is necessary. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that the, the best thing to do would be for everybody to read it and to make sure that we, uh, that you are comfortable with moving forward with the direction that the, uh, the work group suggests, uh, so that we can then pass it on to the city manager to implement the things that we have recommended.
Okay, um, I just wanna check with other members of the, of the working group, were there, um, Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with Shayna, um, that, uh, we, we made some progress and, um, and, uh, yep, more work is, is needed. I wanted to particularly highlight, uh, because I was closest to it, but a part, a part of our, our task having to do with, with, uh, with performance metrics. And, and we, we are recommending that the, you know, that the council schedule a meeting on that. I just wanna say that we have, um, we have some good research that we've pulled up, pulled together, um, from GFOA, as well as other cities, including Rockville, as a model for performance metrics. So I just wanna share that there's good research available, as well as, you know, our, our recommendation is that we discuss it further and, um, work closer with staff to, to move it forward.
Okay.
Thank you, I, um, I would, um, just follow up on Councilmember Gibson's, uh, comment that, uh, first of all, I think the, the memo basically says, uh, you know, what we wanted to say about, uh, everything, and, and we look forward to your feedback. But, uh, Councilmember Gibson did do a lot of, uh, research on the metrics. And, um, just given the, uh, the time and the direction that we'd received from the council, the, uh, subcommittee did not, uh, delve into that research and to, to look at it. But I, I strongly support, uh, the use of metrics, uh, inclusion of metrics in the budget. Um, confident that the city manager, uh, shares that, uh, that hope, uh, so that we know whether our budget goals have been met. And, um, I look forward to, uh, the city manager and the council working together to, um, come up with metrics, uh, hopefully some this year, uh, maybe, uh, for most of budget items next year.
Okay, thank you very much. So just in terms of next steps, so, um, we've received the memorandum, and I know it's quite late for folks right now, so we probably, um, aren't gonna be able to dive deep into this tonight. Um, but it would be helpful for folks to, uh, review the memo, follow up with, um, a member or so of the subcommittee if there are any questions. I will be reviewing the memo from the perspective of whether or not, um, we need to work some discussion into, um, a future agenda in order to see whether or not there are specific recommendations that warrant the council to make a, um, a decision or, uh, in terms of a resolution, or some sort of official vote for direction for the, um, for the city manager. So we'll, I'll take a look just to confirm, 'cause I see that there are some things, um, you know, in terms of like the, um, uh, equipment replacement reserve, um, you know, um, no, doing additional reviews and, and things like that. So I just wanna make sure that, um, that the recommendations from the sub, um, from the, the working group, um, actually reflect the will of the council. Um, and so that would mean that we would need to bring some of these items up for a vote. Okay, all right, uh, Councilmember Gibson?
I just wanted to follow up, uh, because we did not make much, uh, we had a, I guess, would it be helpful for, uh, some of the research that, that we've gathered on performance metrics to be shared as well?
It, it would be helpful, so if, if that, that supplemental information that would be helpful for the group, yes, I think it's fine to share.
And so I should send that to everybody here?
Send it to everyone, but just as a reminder, you could share that information through the city manager and, and send it out. But just as a reminder, we don't do business via email as a group, so.
Yeah.
Um, Councilmember DeBala, see your light?
Yeah, there's, there's a few things in here that are actually pretty big, like recommending that we keep the commercial property tax at the same level that it is. Um, not commenting on agreeing or disagreeing, just saying that's pretty big. Um, so some of these recommendations are pretty big, and I would appreciate a chance to delve into this a little bit more. Um, and the information on performance metrics would be helpful, because, um, the last time the city council talked about it, it may be that we were talking about something completely different and much more ambitious from what you seem to, what you, what you may be talking about right now. So that would be helpful, too, yeah. Um, I'm a little surprised on the fees, 'cause I thought that the staff had, um, this is my last question, I promise. But, um, I thought that the city staff had begun at some point a review of the fee, some of the fees. And I'm not sure, I know where that wound up.
Yes, yeah, so Seth has been ongoing looking at fees over the last several months, um, as part of their, just general, regular course of business. And it's something that we've asked them to consider when preparing their budgets this year.
Okay.
And so that will be part of budget presentation.
So that one is already going on?
I can comment a little bit about that, which is, um, like fortunately, some of the software that we've gotten for Public Works has actually made them more efficient at some of the things that they're doing, as far as what, what, you know, fees cover. Um, we also, uh, you know, after some talks with the city manager, uh, you know, being careful, uh, about what we're permitted to charge for, um, fees. Fees are supposed to cover, um, you know, what that cost is for the city, they're not supposed to be a way to make profits.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, keeping that in mind, uh, I think that we're gonna see a lot of places where we just aren't able to raise fees, because it's not within, uh, what's permissible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, seeing no more licensing, and seeing that it is eleven-thirty, um, I would like to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. We were having so much fun.
Do we have a second? Thank you very much. Second? Excellent, everyone.